Good evening. This is a work session for the Malala City Council for Wednesday, August 27, 2025. We'll begin with roll call, beginning with Council Gilmer.
Council Gilmer, present.
Council Shankle, present.
Council Childers, present.
Mayor Kaiser, present.
Council President Vermillion, present.
Council Bartholomew, present.
City Recorder Kristi Teetz, present.
Dan Hoff, City Manager, present.
Please note that if a councillor wishes to discuss a major policy issue, that it is not on the agenda. It should be raised during new business for consideration at a future work session or meeting, not during the current meeting. Decisions cannot be voted on during work session. All right. Tonight's topic is going to be applications for appointment. Good evening, candidates. I'd like to thank each of you for joining us this evening, for your interest in serving on the Malala City Council. We have a series of questions for you. Each of you will be given two minutes to answer, no longer. If we have time at the end of the work session, we'll ask follow-up questions. The goal is to make an appointment at tonight's city council meeting, with a swearing-in ceremony at the September 10 meeting. Council has questions at their seats. I'll get started with the first question. Does anybody have questions on how this will work? So I'm going to ask one question. I'm going to begin with Stephen Roberts, and then, once Stephen's done, Regina will answer, Shane will answer, and then we'll come over here, Casey, Tara. And is it Corinne or Cory? I think I've heard both.
I go by Cory.
Cory, okay, perfect. So, Mr. Roberts, the city is guided by the Malala Municipal Charter and Code, master plans, and state guidelines. Having that knowledge, how would you describe the role of a city council, and the role a councillor plays in governing the city?
I would think of it, kind of, the role would be more like navigators, interpreters. You know, you have to be able to navigate through all the rules and guides and everything that are put in front of you so that you can actually direct what needs to be directed in the correct way for the city, for the people, for what has to happen. You've got to know, you've got to be the one, the person, the people that have read through all the stuff, that understand where you're going with it, instead of just saying, "This is what we need to do." I mean, there's rules, and there's methods and processes that are involved in the whole thing that have to be understood and navigated through.
All right. All right. Regina?
I actually wrote mine out. To me, this means that the role of the city council and a city councillor is to adhere to and be guided by these provided charters, codes, master plans, and state-issued guidelines. They govern our city by ensuring that they follow protocols that provide transparency to the citizens of Malala, so that questions and concerns that do arise will show everything above board. All meetings are announced, all voting has been debated and reviewed before it takes place. They are representatives of our community, and as such, should hold high standards for themselves while providing the best possible solutions and guidance for our city's immediate and future growth, development, and possible needs that may arise along the way.
All right, thank you. Ms. Kelly?
So, I would say that it's their job to, basically, you know, follow the guidelines and break it down for the citizens of Malala, and basically challenge what they can for the people, so that, you know, we fight for what we really want here. And I think every system has its set of rules and guidelines, but I think those should be challenged, and I think that's the city council's job, is to challenge that authority and make sure that, you know, we get what we need as a city.
How do I say your last name?
Bassinius.
Mr. Bassinius.
Thank you. I also wrote mine out. The councillor's role is to set policy in the directions for the city, guided by the Malala charters, the city codes, the master plans, and the state requirements. Councillors are policymakers and also community representatives. They don't manage the day-to-day operations. That's done by the talented staff of the city staff. And councillor's role is to listen to its residents, weigh decisions against the city guidelines, and ensure accountability from staff while keeping long-term health of the city in mind. In short, council provides a vision and oversight, while staff provides implementation and expertise.
Okay. Ms. Woolsey?
I think, master plans, being present, really knowing what the community is wanting, also knowing the amount of growth the city can withhold. Finished.
Okay. Ms. Thomas MacLeod?
I believe that the city council is very important to our city. Sorry. I believe the city council is very important to our city. We have a lot of different issues, and I think being a part of a group that looks at all of those different issues and brings to the table, knowing all the policies and the guidelines and all that kind of stuff, which helps better make decisions for us, and guides us into the decisions that we need to make. But it's also our responsibility to check with our constituents and know our policies, so that we can even know if we can change it, or be a part of it, or what that looks like for us. Because one of the things I see is that we do that, but what does that look like when different people do it? And as in a group, you know, as this is a group, and we look at those policies, how I see a policy might not be how you read a policy, or you. And so, as we come together in a group and read these policies, it gives the opportunity to come together as a group, and as a people, to come up with the best answer for all the people.
All right. Thank you. I will turn round two over to Council President Vermillion.
All right, beginning with Ms. Regina Sheeves. The Malala City Council adopted a vision and action plan in 2020. That expires in 2030. What do you consider important factors in the group decision-making process?
In a group decision-making process, it's important to consider all voices and opinions. Each person should be allowed to speak, and then be truly heard. No one voice should be louder than another. No one voice should be considered more important than another member's voice. Decisions on a governmental level are about democracy, which, in my mind, is a team situation. If one member of a team is allowed to rule over the others or overshadow other members, the democratic process breaks down. And in a small town like Malala, the process and function of this democratic team is highly important.
All righty, thank you. Ms. Kelly?
So, let me see. So, I do believe that everybody should have a fair say in decision-making, and I do believe that everything comes from a group decision. There's a lot better results from a group decision when everybody weighs in, has their opinions, and every opinion is heard. Yeah, I don't...
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bassinius?
Yes, sir. Effective group decision-making begins with listening to diverse perspectives from residents, the staff, and your fellow councillors. It requires respectful dialogue, transparency, and weighing choices against Malala's guiding values and long-term plans. The 2030 Vision Plan is a great example of that. It came from public input with over 1,000 different participants out of 10,000, so 10% of our city, roughly, got a say. And that's a pretty great number when you look at it holistically. These values demonstrate how good decision-making balances facts, community priorities, and long-term impacts. Ultimately, the decision should reflect a common ground and build trust while representing the entire community.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Woolsey?
I think that it would be a good thing to get the entire community involved. I know, for a lot of us, there are many, many people who have been here, born and raised, and I think there is a lot of people who are moving here within, I'd say, like, the past five years. Things have shifted, so I think it's very important to get the entire community involved, and listen to their opinions, and take that with a grain of salt, obviously.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Thomas MacLeod?
I think of a group like this as a think tank. And with any think tank, things and ideas come from all different places. One of the best think tanks, you know, we have them all over. It's what we run our businesses off of. It's what we run our government office. Nobody should be making the decision all alone unless they have to, unless it comes down to that, you know, last vote. But with a group like this, and with a group like, taking that think tank, and taking those ideas, and being able to mold them in between each other, and being able to be honest with each other, and being able to... And being honest with each other doesn't always mean that we agree. I mean, we can disagree to agree. And to have a group that doesn't always agree is where you're going to get your best changes, because you can't have a change without a conflict. Conflict is what creates our change in the world, no matter what scenario you're in. And when you have a think tank like that, you bring all those scenarios to the table, and you bring those conflicts to the table. So, working as a group is very important. It is based off of, sometimes, all of our leaders, depending on how well, you know, what you're looking for. What's your final goal in that think tank, you know? Because sometimes we can lead people into what we want, or do we want a brand-new idea that we've never heard before? And with that, that's what these groups bring. They can bring either way. It depends on how you want to lead that group.
Thank you. All righty, at this point, I will turn it over.
You've got one more.
Oh, sorry, sorry. That's right. Mr. Roberts, I'm sorry.
Cooperation, understanding, and both. Working together, you know, it may not be your idea, but working together, you can figure out and understand somebody else's point of view. Cooperating, working together, and then putting those two together, you get growth, and that's what it needs. A community of this caliber is going to have, as she said, many different opinions, and that's where the working together and cooperating with each other is going to equal the growth that's needed for this town.
Great. Thank you. Now, I'll turn it over to Council Childers.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, you're up first this time.
Hi.
Do you anticipate that any conflicts of interest will arise if you're appointed to the council? And if so, how would you handle them?
I don't anticipate any, but I would handle them in a very professional manner. I don't... Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bassinius?
Yeah. I do not anticipate any conflicts of interest either. If one did arise, I would follow Oregon Ethics Law, disclose it immediately, and recuse myself where it's appropriate. Maintaining trust and transparency is more important than participating in one single decision.
Ms. Woolsey?
I don't anticipate anything. If something shall arise, I would take it to my superiors or my next chain of command.
Ms. Thomas MacLeod?
I don't anticipate any conflicts, but conflicts always arise, and that's what makes the conflicts, is we don't expect them. So then, what do we do with them now that we have them? So, each conflict, it depends on what the conflict is. I can't give you a great answer, because it depends on what the conflict is. We all have children, we all have friends, and we treat them each differently. So, depending upon the conflict, the level, and all that, would depend upon what my actions were, and how I was going to handle that. We... I think we all handle each of these differently, and sometimes, you know, with that, that's how I handle conflict anyways. We talk about it, we come up with an answer. And I always tell my children, "No is an answer also."
True.
Doesn't mean I like it, but no is an answer.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
I also do not anticipate any, but if one would arise, then I would probably just disclose it to the council, and then I'd have to recuse myself.
Thank you. Ms. Sheeves?
I don't expect there would be any on my part either, but like the others have said, I would step back and be transparent about it, and let you guys know that there could be a potential issue. Right now, I could think of maybe, because we're not so sure where the Parks Committee is going, that that... And I am on that committee, so right now, that would be the only one I could think of, but I am willing to step away from that if I need to.
Thank you. I'll turn it to you, Ms. Shankle.
Great. So, I'm going to totally bash your last name, because I'm terrible at it. So, my question starts with you. My...
Bassinius.
Bassinius?
Bassinius.
Bassinius?
Yes.
I thought Clink Skels was bad. Okay. Based on your experience or general awareness of the city, what do you consider to be the strengths and challenges for our city?
I'm basing my experience on the time I've lived here. So, the strengths I see, it's rural character, it's natural environment. You know, we have the beautiful forests around us, we have the Malala River corridor. Those are all great things that are unique to our city. The proximity in the greater Alamo Valley creates a lot of opportunity, both the job markets, but it also allows us to maintain our small-city lifestyle, which is important. And it also has strong community identity. You look at events like the Buckaroo, you look at the event Saturday, they get great participation. People love to live here, and that shows. The challenges, managing rapid growth while keeping that small-town feel. It's always a balancing act. Infrastructure strain, obviously, we have a lot of infrastructure projects, you know, water, wastewater, roads, they all need investments. That's always a challenge. Economic diversity, balancing growth and housing while attracting small business, or business of all scale. And then maintaining affordability while supporting all the needed services the city provides.
Thank you.
Tara, the same question. I think I consider the strengths of the community is being the locals that have been here for a long period of time. And then the challenges are the growth, per se, like the apartments. He kind of mentioned the water. Us expanding quicker than some of us would like to is probably a huge challenge.
Thank you. Cory?
I think all the people and all the businesses that belong to Malala are our strengths. And I say it that way, because I've been an Oregonian my entire life, but does that matter? I'm here in Malala, and this is what cares to me. I've been in this area for many years too, but it's not about me. It's about the people that are here. And it's every person that's here, whether they've been here for 10 days, or 20 years, or their entire life. They're here. They're all important. They all have a voice. Our challenges are getting them together, and getting them to all look the same direction, and have the same goals, and be able to put it together. Because if we can get people to look in the same direction, then your cities will come. The roads will come, because they'll understand why we need them. And when you go out and talk to people, they're going to trust you because you trust them. And without any of that, we don't have anything, because it doesn't matter what we say. If they don't trust us, they don't trust us. So, I think our strengths, and I think all the city stuff, all that always comes. That's taught to us. It's in a book, it's on Google, it's on your AI. What about the people, and how they look at this stuff? What is it that they need? Because what Silverton has may not be what we need here.
Right.
And what Oregon City has may not work here. And we live in different areas, we live on different lands, we have all kinds of things. We have rural people, we have city people. And how do you bring that together? That is a difficult thing, because rural people and city people look at life very differently. How we buy, how we sell, all of that. But what I found, I'll give it to you, I'm the owner of the ARK. What I have found with the people in Malala, oh my gosh, some guy came and washed my building and my sidewalks, because he knows I give out to other people and make other people happy, and he was wonderful.
Time's up now. Perfect.
That's pretty cool. Steve, your turn.
Yeah, the camaraderie, the character, you know, the strength in this town, obviously, with the people. The challenges that we got right now, obviously, are the growth, the funding, and the infrastructure. This town is growing fast. This town is growing very fast. In the, you know, the five years that I've been here, I've seen this town grow ridiculously fast already. And so, I mean, infrastructure and funding of the growth is going to be one of the biggest challenges. And working through that, and working, and, you know, having the people understand that as well, just like the roads. I mean, everybody understands what's going on. Nobody likes it, but they understand it. And keeping that communication going is going to be the key.
Thank you. Gina?
I think that our biggest strength is our people themselves. And it's all the residents. They know what it is to pull together. During the fires, we supported one another. Businesses handed out food. We were there to provide clothing, friendship, a gentle, loving arm when it was needed. So, the residents themselves are our biggest strength. They show us what it is to live in a small town. Every single day. That's our biggest strength, is to live in a small town and care about one another. Our biggest challenges are our current growth. It is fast, and it is challenging. It is challenging on the water supply, the utilities, our taxes, the schools. We see that every day. I work in a school. Mr. President Vermillion works in the school. Our biggest challenge is that. It's crowded, and we don't always know what to do with that. As the attendance secretary at our school, I sat up buses for 416 students today, in one elementary school. And we afford, with massive growth. So, our biggest challenge is, how do we accomplish handling all those utilities and all these people, and caring for them, and letting them know what we truly are about, as that growth continues to push forward?
Thank you. Shane?
Not to sound repetitive, but kind of like everybody else said, our community here is the reason I moved out here, you know, and wanted to be a part of this community. I'm a born and raised Portland Oregonian. I've lived all throughout the metro area. I met my wife back in 2002 and decided to come out here, and been a part of this community a little bit ever since. Bought a house about three years ago and decided to get involved. I think the strengths here are the small-town community and the feel of togetherness that everybody has. I think the weaknesses are the growth. I think it's coming fast and strong out here, and I think there's a lot of problems that come with it. Growing up in Portland, I never thought I would leave that small Hawthorne community that I grew up in, and now I won't even return there. It's sad. It really is sad. The homelessness, the drugs, everything that the growth brings. And I think that's a major challenge with Malala and where we're going right now, is we're growing fast, and there's going to be a lot of problems that come with it. And that worries me a lot, because, like I said, when I moved out here, the amount of trick-or-treaters I had come to my house, the kids that play in the street on their bicycle still, I don't see that in the big city anymore. You know, that's what I moved out here to get away from, and that's what really scares me, that we're going to lose over time out here. So, those are my concerns, and my beliefs are our strengths and our weaknesses.
Thank you. And Council Gilmer, it's your turn.
Yes, it's my turn. I get to start with Ms. Woolsey. Are you aware that the city works from 17 different funds? And what is your view of the overall economic health of Malala?
I'm not aware of the 17 different funds, but I think if I was in Baltimore, I would probably be aware of that and know where they came from. My view of the overall economic health of Malala, I would say... That's kind of an open-ended question. I would say that it's pretty fair, considering that we have a new school that's going to be built, but then again, we're talking about we're overpopulated. So, the health is probably, with the amount of apartments and whatnot, and having, you know, our town is growing, I would say the health of Malala is probably on a slow decline. I mean, I don't... I could be wrong. That's really all I have to say to that question.
Okay. Ms. Thomas MacLeod?
I don't know what your seven different funds are, but every town struggles for money. Our government struggles for money, federal, state, everyone. So, it's about getting together and figuring out, just like a budget at home. What's my budget? What do I have? And what's in my means? And can I get my means to be better? If I can get my means to be better, then I get more, right? So, what does it take to get 21 instead of 17? And how is that spent? And how do we want to spend it? And again, it goes back to that group thing. You know, can we work together as a group? What's that look like for a budget? I'm sure all those things play into that. Financial is never easy for anything, not a business, not a home, not a town. And if it is, then we will call you Elon Musk. But until then, you know, we all will struggle with it, because we all spend differently. So, even though we have 17 banks or 17 funds, what's our spending? Is our spending greater than our funds, or are our funds greater than our spending? And those are the things that I think that city council and our government work out to a certain point, because they have to be able to plan the roads. They have to be able to plan the cities. What comes first? What's that triage look like? What's that algorithm look like? And if this happens, does that happen? So, it's about setting up a lot of algorithms that go with your financial piece. So, that's how I would look at it, is more as a budget, an algorithm, and what do we need?
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
No, I was not aware that there were 17 funds that funded the operations of this city. I do think that the city is in, I mean, not bad, but definitely, you know, not great, but good. We got a new police station going in the process. We got schools, road projects that are being done. I don't think the city is hurting, but I don't think it's doing great either. There's a lot more stuff that could be done, but I don't know the financials behind that. So, until I have, you know, more information on that, I really couldn't give a good answer as far as, you know, the health of, the overall health. So, no, not really.
Okay. Ms. Sheeves?
As a current member of the Budget Committee, I am familiar with the 17 multiple funds that we have, and their various constraints, and how they work together, and the ones that we can and cannot pull from. I feel that our economic health could use a little bit of oxygen. We're doing well, and we are seeing forward progress in our community with the police station, and the bond that passed for the middle school, but there are a lot of areas that could use some improvement. And it's how do we research to come up with methods that work best for the community, other than just raising taxes to improve their community. And I think that's going to be, in the long run, one of the things that gives us oxygen or takes it away.
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
No, I'm not aware of the 17 different funds that we pull from. The overall economic health of Malala, I see Malala as a small town that's kind of forgotten about. Silverton, Cambie, everywhere, you know, you go to those towns, there's a lot of restaurants, a lot of people out in the community. I feel the Malala is, you know, when I first came out here, we had like the one blinking light, and that was it, in the middle of town. And I feel that that's our center. We've grown from there, but I don't feel that I see a lot of people really out walking the town, and the little shops and stuff like that, and that I do in like Silverton or Cambie or other little towns. So, I mean, I feel that our economical health is kind of, it's a challenge. As a small-business owner, it's a challenge to start a business in this town, and to get people to come out, because they just don't seem to really come out here in Malala. I think we should focus on building small-business owners in the community, instead of like franchises and stuff like that, you know, and really bring that small-town feel and open it up to make it easier for small businesses to develop this area, and to grow our town in a way that isn't commercialized with franchise companies coming in and raping the profits, and basically stealing them from our small community, to support a much larger fund. I'd like to keep it local, with local business owners, and find a way to strengthen that, and work with programs to help those small-town business owners to thrive. So, that's right.
Thank you. Mr. Bassinius?
Bassinius. During my research, I did find out that the city operates on 17 funds. You know, out of the general funds, there is some ability to move within the budgeted items, and then there are also items that are sp- budgeted items, and then there are also items that are specifically earmarked for different apartments that are untouchable for those separate entities. I'm aware of the city's large capital investments underway, the new wastewater treatment facility, the police station, the school, and the local park improvement. Also recognize the water intake projects on the horizon, and that'll be, you know, a big cost, but it's essential for our future growth. Overall, I believe that the economic health appears to be stable, but carefully balanced growth provides opportunity. Rising, excuse me, but rising costs and infrastructure needs require careful financial stewardship to remain viable.
Thank you. And I turn it over to Counselor Bartholomew.
Okay, starting with Cory. Participating in city council requires a time commitment for items outside of the city council meetings. Are you willing and/or able to participate?
Yes.
Okay. Tara?
Yes, I would like to be more than just a resident. I would like to be more involved.
Casey?
Yes, I'm willing to, I'm willing and available. I previously served on business councils and committees while balancing my professional career, as well as being relevant and grounded at home with a young family. In my career, I've also managed significant travel and workload, and while being able to demonstrate my ability to commit fully to those items. I understand that serving on council means being present, being prepared, and being engaged in the community outside of regular meetings, and that there is a, there is definitely a time commitment that I've witnessed during the last several meetings I participated in, trying to prepare for it, do the homework myself. And I made sure that I had a commitment from my family that they fully understood what this role was going to take, and that they were on board with this process.
Shane?
Yeah, actually, so yeah, I'm willing to do the required time and items outside of the city council meetings. I moved out to this community, like I said, I'm born and raised Portland Oregonian. I moved to this small-town community to get involved and participate in any which way I could. I'm probably a little bit out of my depth here today, but you got to get started somewhere, right? So that's why I'm here. And I plan to put as much time and effort into it as I can.
Okay. Regina?
I'm definitely willing to step up and put in that time to serve my community and to help it improve and grow even more than it already is. That's always worth a little more work and a little less sleep. I'm a single grandmother raising, well, going into high school this year, and she has medical issues, so she's a little bit of a challenge. But, and she's an awesome child who actually wants to be part of, if it ever occurs, the junior city council. So I want to set an example. I want to show her how to become involved in her community. I'm on the Budget Committee, I'm on the Parks Committee, and I do that, and I've brought her to those meetings so that she can see what it's all about. So I want to be the very best I can be, not only for the community, but for her as well.
Okay. Stephen?
I have no problem with committing for time to, to do what needs to be done as far as outside this, the meetings. I do have a job, but my, as a manager, I, you know, time during business hours needs to be taken off, I have no problem with that either. I set my own schedule, so I have no, no, no issues with commitments on time.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
All right.
Liam Moore? Is it?
That's it. Kristi?
Yes?
Anything you think I should bring up, or?
Can I ask one question? Of all? Yes, that's actually where I was going, Mayor. At this point, you have a captive audience. You are, you are more than welcome to get to know candidates. And one, one thing that I would suggest, that if you're going to ask one candidate, then you have to ask all candidates. All right, thank you. So my question is, because I've heard it several times when you guys are talking about the city and stuff, do you realize that the school district is not city business? You can go first.
Yes, I'm aware that that is not one of the 17 funds, as, you know, 211 is always brought up in these.
Actually, that's not really what I meant. Let me, before you go too farther. Okay. So there is the city, and there is the school district, and we are not connected in any way, shape, or form. Are you guys aware of that? Because a lot of people think that the city also runs the school district and, or makes decisions for them, or, you know, because it's always said, well, we, you know, our schools are growing, or we need to, we need to fill up people, that the city really has nothing to do with the school district. We work together with them, but we don't have anything to do with them. So you didn't, you kind of knew that?
Uh, no, yes, I very much knew that.
Tara, were you, you weren't aware of that?
Just purely assumption.
I do understand that. I have kids in the school district here. I've worked with the school districts for many years, doing programs and, and even with sports and all that kind of stuff, so yes, very aware.
You knew that, okay. How about you?
I did not know that.
Okay. Regina?
Yes.
You work with the school district. You should know that.
We are two separate entities, yes.
And Shane, were you?
No, I wasn't aware.
Okay. Most people aren't, and that's why I was kind of curious, because you guys said "school district" a lot. It is completely separate. Not that that really matters, but, all right, thank you.
Any other questions by council?
Any other questions?
I don't have any other questions. We might offer the candidates an opportunity to add a last comment.
Sure.
If they have something they would like to add.
Mr. Roberts, we'll start with you. If you guys, if you would like to make one final comment on why you believe you're qualified to be on the Malala City Council, this would be your time to do so.
Keep it short and sweet. I mean, I, I've lived here for about five years now. I love the town, it's a great place. I'm going to retire here, I've already determined that. I'd like to be a part in helping to guide the city into, you know, the future, see where it's at. Instead of just actually, you know, sitting back and watching things happen, I want to be an active part of it. I've got plenty of experience in management, and I've been on this planet for quite a while, so. Thank you.
Ms. Sheeves?
For me, it's, I want to see the right kind of growth here. I want to make an impact. I would love to see revitalization of our downtown, and I would like to be involved in that and see that as something that we can make come to fruition. I think at one time, that was a thriving part of our community, and I would love to see that happen again, as it was stated, rather than the big box stores coming in. Let's bring in some other smaller businesses, let's get them to, to come here and walk those streets and see it as an active, thriving area. He said that small businesses have a problem getting people to come to them. There's not a lot to do here. So I would love to see other activities come to our community, and I want to be a part of making that happen. And like I said, I want to set an example, not only for my granddaughter, but for her friends and for the teens around us, the high schoolers that I'm now going to be involved with. I want them to see what it's about. And it's not about sitting on your laurels, it's about becoming active and making your laurels active.
Mr. Kelly?
Like I kind of already mentioned earlier, I'm a born and raised Portland Oregonian, and I moved out here to get away from all that craziness in the city. And, you know, I want to get involved with the community as much as possible to just make sure that doesn't happen out here. It's a beautiful little place. I met my wife out here, been coming out here since about 2002, and bought a house out here three years ago now, so I love the community, I love the small-town feel, but I do feel that it's kind of a town that's forgotten for small businesses and, and stuff like that, you know? Like I said, I just, I'd like to see the growth and growing in the right direction, and I'd like to be involved with that to make sure that, you know, it stays the way it is, but yet we grow at a reasonable pace and, and we don't get all that big-city trouble that comes with it, you know? So.
Mr. Bassinius?
Yeah, I also recently purchased a home here, raised a family here. I have a young daughter and wife, and I want to become active in our community, give back, have a say, and try to make it a place that we will continue to live for the rest of our lives and enjoy. I want it to be an environment where Aria has a great place to call home that she's proud of, and I want to maintain that. I feel that I have a unique, you know, set of skills for my business career. I've been on many councils, I've been on many committees, and I've balanced all of that multiple times throughout my, my time. So I feel that the combination of those things really give me a very good position to try something new and to be active in my community.
Ms. Tara?
I think for me, the biggest part of it is, there's always those people that complain and have complaints, but they never do anything about it, and I think that's what's brought me here today. I don't want to complain, and I can't complain, I don't have that right if I'm not trying to do anything about it, so that's why I am here.
Ms. Cory?
I think what brings me here tonight is the people and people saying, "Get involved." I can't make any changes if I'm not involved. I can't have a voice. This is my chance to have a voice. I've been through the wringer of what it takes to get a business into this town, and it is not easy. It was horrifying, in fact. And if we want all businesses here, we have to make some changes, and we have to counsel our businesses in how to get them to those next steps. Because I have spent many hours with other businesses and small businesses that have made it and come in here, and we can do this, and we can get what we need. And I don't think anybody did it intentionally or anything like that. It's just our system. It's hard. It's how many people start businesses and really understand what it takes to put a business together? What are the costs? Was it to either rent or buy the land? What are all the laws and things that go with it? Because it is not just about Malala, it's also about Clackamas County and everything else that goes with it, and how it all intertwines. And I can't even get to Malala until I get through with Clackamas, you know? So, and who, what, who owns what road in front of me is a big thing too, because maybe it's not even Malala's, maybe it's ODOT's, or maybe it's the state's, and they all have a say in it. And there are so many facets, it's just kind of like a huge Rubik's Cube, and how that puzzle works. Most of the time, we can hopefully get the square and the colors back, and that's when we start getting our businesses in here. And as we can lead them and teach them, maybe the mistake that I made, I can say, "Hey, I did that, there might be a better way if you're interested." Or, "Does it look like that to you, but is there another avenue?" Maybe we can lead people into being able to bring businesses and more businesses and entertainment, because it's not just about small bars and restaurants, it's about the whole package. It's about having a, a, everything, you know? And how do we keep that with everything? Because our town is small, and what if a big business, like somebody wants to open in Bowling, like, do we have the people that can even make that happen for them without them going under? And what is it for a change of occupancy? And what is all these questions that these people have? And how can we lead them to get them to the business that they need to be in? And how do we get them to those next steps? And that's what brought me here, because I've been through all those steps, and let me tell you, they are way crazy, and I made every mistake that there was in the book, I want you to know, every single one of them. So if I can save somebody that step, absolutely. Because if a new business comes in and they bring 10 people, that might be 10 people that walk through my doors. And if we can get everybody on board and get that all going, and those 10 people bring 10 more people, maybe it's about bringing outside people in, not necessarily as a growth in thing, but how many cities do you go to? How many of you go to Silverton just to walk the shops and bring the money in and stuff? So we have to look at all those facets and all those things, and that's what brought me here today, because, man, I am a tiny little sliver in that facet, and I'd like to learn more.
All right, thank you. Any other questions by council? Candidates, I'd like to let you guys know, this is probably one of the hardest things we have to do as a council. We are, the seven of us, or six of us, are representing 10,000 people in deciding who sits up here. It's not like this is a regular election where they, they get to choose. So the decision we make tonight is incredibly hard. You guys all brought your A-game and showed, if I was in your guys' shoes five years ago, I don't know if I could have answered the questions as well as you guys did. A year, just a year from now, we're going to be in elections again. The seat only lasts until the end of next year. I would like to suggest to all of you to get with our city recorder and run. Okay? You guys all have a chance at winning an election in the city. One of you will make it. You all should be very, very proud of yourselves. And I just want to say thank you for coming out tonight.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to just tag on to what the mayor said, he spoke such truth. Never before have we had such a rich pool of qualified candidates vying for one appointment. So that means five people are going to go away here tonight, not being elected as a city councillor. But with the election coming up, we encourage you to, you know, run then. And also in the meantime, there'll be opportunities for you to be involved. We have the Planning Commission, we have Budget Committee, we have Arts and Culture Committee and other such things that you can be involved in. And keep your, keep your finger on the pulse of the city in the meantime and be part of us, because there's a lot more involvement behind the scenes than just those of us sitting up here in the front. So I encourage you to keep your head up and be part of that, and next year, you know, get in there and run for a position. And I just thank you so much for applying, all of you.
I totally agree. Both Leota and I are at our term limits, so our positions are coming up next, next year. So there'll be...
Three seats.
Three seats, yeah. And we're, we can't run anymore, so, you know, you don't have us for competition. Not that we're competition, you know?
Waiting for the field.
Well, you know how people, they go, "Oh, well, they ran it before, Jack." Think about us. So, yes, please, I was just thrilled to see we had six people applying for this.
Anybody else?
Just want to echo what everyone else is saying. Thank you for being here. I think it's awesome that we had six candidates. Elections are coming up real quick, right around the corner. If you don't make it tonight, hey, there's three seats that will be open that you can run for, so thank you so much.
Mayor?
Yeah?
Since we have a captive audience, and you all have done such an incredible job of promoting seats, I'd like to give dates. You all, all six of you, have my contact information. You are welcome to email me, call me anytime. City council positions that expire at the end of next year, you will be eligible to run next June. So be thinking about, you know, keep an eye on the website. There's, I have, there is a plethora of information there about local government and what the, the duties are, and what you can do and what you can't do during campaigning, so I would encourage you to visit the, the website. And also, we have, I don't know off the top of my head, I believe it's two, possibly three, Budget Committee seats that will be open in February. And I also know how to get ahold of each of you, so. You've been warned. But please, when we do the call, you'll, you'll hear it through city council and whatnot. When we hear the call for needing Budget Committee members, I'd also look to see applications from all of you. So, that's my shameless plug. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. City Manager Huff, you're the only one that hasn't spoke. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm just looking at who one of my future bosses will be.
All right. Well, if there isn't anything else, I will adjourn this meeting at 6:49. Well, if there isn't anything else, I will adjourn this meeting at 6:49.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion of second, is there any discussion? All right, Christie, we call the rule.
Certainly, Counselor Gilmer.
Aye.
Counselor Schenkel.
Aye.
Counselor Childress.
Aye.
Counsel President Vermillion.
Aye.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Thank you, vote passes six zero.
All right, up next, presentations, proclamations, and ceremonies. A police facility update, Mr. Uff, can I have your staff report, please?
Yeah, I'm going to invite our project manager, Joshua Dodson, up and to go through our report for this quarter.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
It's hot.
Okay.
They're all hot tonight.
All right, well, I'm going to direct you to page eight of your council packet. Give you time to turn there. And forgive me ahead of time, this is kind of going to be a boring report because this project is going well and as it should be, and so I'm going to kind of go quickly, not in super detail like I did last time. So, the item number one is the project vitals, that's just there for history so that you can see the size of the project, the acreage, and kind of the bigger picture, money for the project. And the second item on the on the report is the project team, so that you can go back and look at who's the owner, who's the architect, who's the contractor, and the various consultants. And number three is the budget status for the project, you can see there's becoming more red, we have spent through July of 2025, we've spent a little over $12 million on the project so far, and we have $9.9 million remaining, or roughly 45%. And if you move to the next page, I put this pie chart on here because this is the general contractor, PNC Construction's portion of the overall budget, which is the majority of our budget, that makes up $16.87 million. They have spent $11.3 million through July, or 67%, and they have $5.5 million remaining on their contract. And the one below that is, there is a GMP contingency, so that is a contingency that we have put into their contract, that is spent within their contract with team approval, and it is $903,000 allocation that's been from the beginning, and if you happen to look at the last one we did, we had spent more than this, so now we've only spent $12,000 of that, or what, 1%? And you might ask, well, how in the world can that go down? Well, this this method of contracting allows for credits, it allows for different savings through value engineering and vulture engineering, and in this case, we found savings in the contract where the contractors required to give the money back, they don't just get it if they find it. So in this case, we have a log that's pretty detailed, and they've been finding credits, or changes that ended up not costing money and ended up saving money. So we're going in a good direction on this contingency, and I'm actually not forecasting spending this. I am not really going to tell you how much I think of this we can save, but the goal would be most of this. So if, for instance, we can save, you know, $700,000 of this contingency at the end of the job, that money comes back to the city, it doesn't go to the contractor, and that's the beauty of this CMGC method of contracting. So that's why we're tracking it separately and very carefully. And then, the next page, I've got the standard design update, what I like to do is have the project manager for the design team, Mackenzie, provide me a short narrative of what their duties are and have been doing, so you can read that. They're really, their main job is just answering questions that the contractor has, as they're putting the building together, they have questions in the form of what's called an RFI, Request for Information, and that's a document control that we have to do contractually, and the architects will answer those, whether it's with the engineers below them, or themselves, to let the contractor keep going. And the construction update, I'm actually going to read this, this is from Jason Bragg, the project manager for PNC. It said, quote, "Construction at the new Malala Police Station is progressing steadily, with several key interior and exterior scopes currently underway. Inside the building, crews are completing painting, installing the ceiling grid, mounting light fixtures, and trimming out the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning components such as grills. Concrete floors are being polished to a high finish, while tile work is advancing on both flooring and walls. On the exterior, all glass and glazing installations are nearing completion, including the bullet-resistant glass for enhanced security. Landscaping efforts are actively shaping the site, incorporating natural elements like boulders and basalt columns. Sidewalk construction is ongoing within the public right-of-way alongside curb installations. Additionally, more than half of the asphalt paving has been successfully completed, marking significant progress towards final site development." And the next page has this simple graphic that shows a schedule, kind of in a graphical form, that the shading is all stuff we've done, the highlighted item is where we're at today, which is, again, interior work, for the most part, and we'll move into finishing the site improvements, and then close out, and substantial completion. Substantial completion is the most important date on this project, and that is the date contractually where every warranty starts, all that period starts, and that date is when we get permits for a certificate of occupancy from the city, and all the proper authority to move in and occupy and utilize the space where it's intended use. That's called substantial completion. And that is the one that we're tracking, that's the one that tracks whether we go assess liquidated damages for failing to complete on time, that's the date that really the entire contract's set on. Final completion will follow that by anywhere from 30 to 60 to 90 days, and so I'm less concerned about that, that's going to drag on probably maybe into the new year a little bit, that's just a cash flow thing, but doesn't affect the actual contractual finish date, which is still on schedule to be done by the end of the year. This next graphic on the next page is called the Contractor Cash Flow Analysis, and what I do is, that original $16.8 million guaranteed maximum price that the contractor has, I like to track that, I like to ask the contractor to give us their best projection month by month during the life of the schedule of the project on how they're going to spend their money, and usually it's a certain bell curve, and so what I do is, I then track those projections against the actual payment applications that come through and get approved, and that's the beauty of this little mechanism, is it tracks it in a database and then graphically forms it on the next page. And the next page has these neat little simple graphs, but what it does to me as a project manager is it kind of can look at, well, how far, how closely are we following their projections? Are we above the line, are we below the line, are we cash flowing ahead of schedule, or are we cash flowing below schedule? And it allows us to ask the contractor questions like, your cash flow's lagging, is that an indication, and could be an indication, that you're slipping behind schedule? And then, in writing, we ask them, and then in writing, they tell us the reasons why they are not behind schedule, and then that gets filed. So we, as an owner, are very protected, I think I've had this conversation before in a past one, but we do this on a continual basis because we want to make sure that there's no surprises in the end, that there's no surprises of, oh yeah, we're going to be three weeks late, there's no way they can do that because we've got all this documentation. And then, item number six on the report, I've titled Interesting Things and Challenges, because I think it's really important that we know that we're not always giving the best news, even though there's just a lot of good news on this project, but the first one, 6A, we've had some issues on the supply deliveries of electrical gear, so this is something that the contractor brought up, that could have been a very big deal to the project, and this had to do with electrical gear for the project to light up, bring power to it, it was supposed to be on one truck, ended up coming on multiple trucks, and we didn't know where they were, when they were going to come, or what. And it just luckily happened where they ended up showing up at the right time, and so that was a little nerve wracking for us because there was a supplier vendor issue that was once removed, twice removed, actually, but that was a red flag that we were watching very closely that thankfully didn't affect our project, but could have. Lighting controls, I think, is an interesting one, we have decided, in the planning years ago, really, to put lighting in this new facility that is the modern ability to change colors. So if you're familiar with the lights now, if you go to Home Depot, if you go to Lowe's, they all have them now, just regular light bulbs have a little switch on them, that you can make them soft, you can make them warm, you can make them daylight, there's like six different types of mood colors for the lighting controls, and there's reasons why you would want those. And the upcharge for that was almost, it wasn't very much at all, and we decided to do that at the beginning. Well, one of the items, issues that we ran into was getting the brains for these lights, ended up being, has ended up being a potential problem, but again, like the one before, it didn't end up being a problem, it was just one of those things that could have been. I'm trying to find things that could have gone wrong, just to report to you. PGE power scheduling, that was another one that, PGE were subject to their scheduling, and thankfully, we've got our transformer, I actually have a picture in here that shows where the transformer was going to go, it's not shown in here, but the next day after I took this picture, it was set in place. So we are now powered up as a building, so the building's got power. The next item on the interesting things is 6B, I put FF and E procurement, so FF and E is furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, all this stuff that goes in these buildings to have it operate, that's a significant amount for a municipal project like this, especially a cop shop, we have $1.3 million budget for that, we're going to spend most of that, and there's literally 1,000 items, range hoods, I mean, there's so many things that we're tracking, and there's a whole separate spreadsheet spreadsheet that we're tracking the procurement of that, and that's not necessarily an easy procurement, but that's an interesting thing. Landscape boulders have been donated, I think many of you know that because you were there when we picked them, and we were told that they were going to be donated, so those landscape boulders that you see when you drive by, the big ones, those were given to our project for free by the subcontractor, and hence, PNC.
Wow.
And the basalt columns, in the picture right below that, those are the basalt columns, they're actually all in place now, and we did the same sort of thing, we picked them out, and now they're laying them and putting them in place, and they're beautiful. 6D, we talked about earlier, the continued use of very little GMP contingency, and that's still, that's just something to celebrate, and then, 6E, the potential project savings forecast this summer of over $600,000.
...of that, or what, 1%? And you might ask, well, how in the world can that go down? Well, this, this method of contracting allows for credits. It allows for different savings through value engineering and vulture engineering. And in this case, we found savings in the contract where the contractors required to give the money back. They don't just get it if they find it. So in this case, we have a, a log that's pretty detailed. And they've been finding credits or changes that ended up not costing money and ended up saving money. So we're going in a good direction on this contingency. And I'm actually not forecasting spending this. I am not really gonna tell you how much I think of this we can save, but the goal would be most of this. So if, for instance, we can save, you know, $700,000 of this contingency at the end of the job, that money comes back to the city. It doesn't go to the contractor. And that's the beauty of this CMGC method of contracting. So that's why we're tracking it separately and very carefully. And then the next page, I've got the standard design update. What I like to do is have the project manager for the design team, Mackenzie, provide me a short narrative of what their duties are and have been doing, so you can read that. They're really, their main job is just answering questions that the contractor has as they're putting the building together. They have questions in the form of what's called an RFI, a request for information. And that's a document control that we have to do contractually. And the architects will answer those, whether it's with the engineers below them or themselves, to let the contractor keep going. And the construction update, I'm actually gonna read this. This is from Jason Bragg, the project manager for PNC. It said, quote, "Construction at the new Malala Police Station is progressing steadily, with several key interior and exterior scopes currently underway. Inside the building, crews are completing painting, installing the ceiling grid, mounting light fixtures, and trimming out the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning components such as grills. Concrete floors are being polished to a high finish, while tile work is advancing on both flooring and walls. On the exterior, all glass and glazing installations are nearing completion, including the bullet-resistant glass for enhanced security. Landscaping efforts are actively shaping the site, incorporating natural elements like boulders and basalt columns. Sidewalk construction is ongoing within the public right-of-way alongside curb installations. Additionally, more than half of the asphalt paving has been successfully completed, marking significant progress towards final site development." And the next page has this simple graphic that shows a schedule, kind of in a graphical form, that the shading is all stuff we've done. The highlighted item is where we're at today, which is, again, interior work for the most part. And we'll move into finishing the site improvements and then close out. And substantial completion. Substantial completion is the most important date on this project, and that is the date contractually where every warranty starts, all that period starts. And that date is when we get permits for a certificate of occupancy from the city and all the proper authority to move in and occupy and utilize the space where it's intended use. That's called substantial completion. And that is the one that we're tracking. That's the one that tracks whether we go assess liquidated damages for failing to complete on time. That's the date that really the entire contract's set on. Final completion will follow that by anywhere from 30 to 60 to 90 days. And so I'm less concerned about that. That's gonna drag on probably maybe into the new year a little bit. That's just a cash flow thing, but doesn't affect the actual contractual finish date, which is still on schedule to be done by the end of the year. This next graphic on the next page is called the Contractor Cash Flow Analysis. And, and what I do is that, that original $16.8 million guaranteed maximum price that the contractor has, I like to track that. I like to ask the contractor to give us their best projection month by month during the life of the schedule of the project on how they're gonna spend their money. And usually, it's a certain bell curve. And so what I do is I then track those projections against the actual payment applications that come through and get approved. And that's the beauty of this little mechanism, is it tracks it in a database and then graphically forms it on the next page. And the next page has these neat little simple graphs, but what it does to me as a project manager is it kinda can look at, well, how far, how closely are we following their projections? Are we above the line? Are we below the line? Are we cash flowing ahead of schedule? Or are we cash flowing below schedule? And it allows us to ask the contractor questions like, your cash flow's lagging. Is that an indication, and could be an indication, that you're slipping behind schedule? And then in writing, we ask them, and then in writing, they tell us the reasons why they are not behind schedule, and then that gets filed. So we, as an owner, are very protected. I think I've had this conversation before in a past one. But we, we do this on a continual basis because we wanna make sure that there's no surprises in the end, that there's no surprises of, oh yeah, we're gonna be three weeks late. There's no way they can do that because we've got all this documentation. And then item number six on the report, I've titled Interesting Things and Challenges, because I think it's really important that, that we know that we're not always giving the best news, even though there's just a lot of good news on this project. But the first one, 6A, we've had some issues on the supply of, supply deliveries of electrical gear. So this is something that the contractor brought up that could've been a very big deal to the project. And this had to do with electrical gear for the project to light up, bring power to it. It was supposed to be on one, one truck, ended up coming on multiple trucks, and we didn't know where they were, when they were gonna come, or what. It just luckily happened where they ended up showing up at the right time. And so that was a little nerve-wracking for us because there was a supplier-vendor issue that was once removed, twice removed, actually. But that was a, a red flag that we were watching very closely that thankfully didn't affect our project, but could've. Lighting controls, I think, is an interesting one. We have decided, in the planning years ago, really, to put lighting in this new facility that is the modern ability to change colors. So if you, if you're familiar with the lights now, if you go to Home Depot, if you go to Lowe's, they all have them now. Just regular light bulbs have a little switch on them that you can make them soft, you can make them warm, you can make them daylight. There's like six different types of mood colors for the lighting controls. And there's reasons why you would want those. And the upcharge for that was almost, it wasn't very much at all, and we decided to do that at the beginning. Well, one of the items that, issues that we ran into was getting the brains for these lights ended up being, has ended up being a potential problem. But again, like the one before, it didn't end up being a problem. It was just one of those things that could've been. I'm trying to find things that could've gone wrong, just to report to you. PGE power scheduling, that was another one that, PGE were subject to their scheduling, and thankfully, we've got our transformer. I actually have a picture in here that shows where the transformer was going to go. It's not shown in here, but the next day after I took this picture, it was set in place. So we are now powered up as a building, so the building's got power. The next item on the interesting things is 6B. I put FF and E procurement, so FF and E is furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, all this stuff that goes in these buildings to, to have the, it operate. That's a significant amount for a municipal project like this, especially a cop shop. We have $1.3 million budget for that. We're gonna spend most of that. And there's literally 1,000 items. Range hoods to, I mean, there's so many things that we're tracking, and there's a whole separate spreadsheet, spreadsheet that we're tracking the procurement of that. And that's not necessarily an easy procurement. But that's, that's an interesting thing. Landscape boulders have been donated. I think many of you know that because you were there when we picked them and we were told that they were gonna be donated. So those landscape boulders that you see when you drive by, the big ones, those were given to our project for free by the subcontractor, hence PNC.
Wow.
And the basalt columns, and the picture right below that, those are the basalt columns. They're actually all in place now, and we did the same sort of thing. We picked them out, and, and now they're laying them and putting them in place. And they're, they're beautiful. 6D, we talked about earlier, the continued use of very little GMP contingency. And the, that's still, that's just something to celebrate. And then 6E, the potential project savings forecast this, this summer of over $600,000. I haven't, don't know if I told you that, but we did a whole financial study of the project, and I feel pretty comfortable forecasting at least $600,000 in savings to the project. I'm hoping this is gonna be over $1 million. So I don't wanna say that just yet, but the 600, it's very comfortable that I feel we can save off the total project cost on this. And that doesn't include any of the $900,000 GMP contingency I talked about earlier. So if the contractor can save that money, then that just adds to that. And then I'm not gonna go through the pictures, other than there's one towards the end. Might be the last picture. Yes. So there's a, there's a final picture on the last page, and it just has a hole, if you can see that, maybe not, if you can see it, because this is, this was interesting because we, we were, we were digging the PGE power hole, power pole holes, and when we dug them, lo and behold, there's conduit right exactly in the middle of it. All five of, we did five of them, and there's conduit. I mean, what are the odds? Exactly right in the middle of it. And so what do you do? You go, whoa, these aren't supposed to be here. And so working with MCC, this was really interesting because they had on their as-built documents two pipes that were abandoned. So in their mind, they're going, it doesn't matter, you can put your poles there, those are, those are all abandoned, it doesn't matter. But if you look closely, there's four pipes, four conduits, and two of them have thousands and thousands of lines in them. And that was one picture I should've put in here. Live lines. So live communication lines. So now we're going, uh-oh, what do we do? Because now we've gotta move this. And I, I wanted to put this picture here because more of a celebration of partnership and, and what you do in construction. So instead of freaking out and, and making this the worst thing ever, it was, it was a simple coordination where they came up and they ended up moving all these lines two feet over and to get them out of our way, and then, and then we were able to do our work. And as far as the impact, yeah, we had to wait a few days, but the, the part of the CMGC is, it's their responsibility to figure out and through their logistics for resequencing. It's really their duty to figure out how to do, work around it while this impact has been, being mitigated. And it really mitigated to no impact, which was pretty cool. And the fascinating thing was watching, again, watching this gentleman in a hole splicing all those lines on the other end. I was just like, how do you do that? And, and that was their issue to deal with, but it was pretty fascinating. So, and, and I think that, other than that, the, the team is working really well. We meet every week, we walk the site every week, and you all are welcome to come by and take a look for a tour. I'm sure a lot of you have done that. And it's, it's a fun project, we get along. There's no fighting, no fist fighting yet between the architect and contractor. We all, we have a really good relationship that's working well. And I'm, we're really not forecasting any issues because part of the thing we do as a team is we think ahead and what sorts of things could possibly go wrong. And, and we talk through these things and try to plan accordingly, and, and we feel like we've got everything in place. So that's my report, if you have any other questions, or if you have any questions.
I have a few questions. Mr. Huff, a lot of talk of savings, money that's not gonna be spent on this project. And we've had other projects before where we've discussed savings, and the narrative, when it leaves our council chambers the next day is, is, city's gonna save all this money, and there's gonna be all this money to put towards something else. Is this money a liquid money, or is this money that we just won't have to draw from with the bond or wherever we, we're drawing money from?
It's, it's really the savings we're gonna, we're gonna realize in, in this is the amount of funding we need to use from urban renewal.
Okay.
So the, the savings will occur there. So in some, in, in some sense, you can say we can use those funds everywhere else because I know that Mr. Cortez is thinking, hey, I got all kinds of things.
He's spent it five times over, I know.
So, so that's really where the savings is gonna be realized, is that we won't spend as much urban renewal money, and then, and in fact, you could use that on other projects.
Okay. So. In the beginning of your report, in the narrative, you brought up hazmat. There was a company we're using for hazmat. Have we run into any hazmat issues with that property?
Other than the bowling alley when we demolished it, no.
Okay.
So we did run in when we were demolishing the, the, the building. Yeah, we had abatement, and we found more than we knew, and, but as far as nothing underground, that's a great question. We were worried about that, actually.
Right.
And no, we didn't, so.
And with, my last question is, with Chief becoming such a great interior designer, has he become the designee for setting what mode the lights are gonna be on?
That's fine. They would not trust me with that.
Yeah, yeah.
He seems to have bailed on most of those discussions, but I do, I would like to point you to page 18. On Joshua's report there, you'll see a few folks standing there, and right in the middle of that group of people standing in front of the, the new building is Rod Lucic.
Yeah, I wondered if that's who that was.
I wanted to point that out, that Chief Lucic came by one day, it was great to see him, and last week, Chief Schoenfeld came by in his sleigh, and so that was, actually, I think he was on a Harley, but, but it's, but they're still very interested in what's going on here. And each of those two individuals had a lot to do with this project, so.
I did notice that picture. I was actually gonna kinda be quiet about it, but since you brought it up, probably might not be a really good picture to advertise. OSHA might have an issue.
Well. I did notice that, Joshua. Thank you.
Should've photoshopped one in.
I actually had gone to the meeting before that, and I just stepped onto the site for the photo and left because I couldn't stay. And they went off on the tour, so I really was just barely onsite. Just barely.
OSHA will issue barely a fine.
I know.
Sorry, had to, had to get you.
That's true, and then, you know, somebody else doesn't have their helmet on, so.
Right. But she's mean.
Anyway, that was all I wanted to do.
Does council have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I do have one question. Do you have any idea or forecast of time when we'll get our street back in front of our new construction? Will that depend on completing the work out front and the sidewalk?
Yes, I would, I would be patient on, on, on that one, only because that's the, that is what we're working on now, and it's, it's really the whole frontage of the project that, where PGE's the, a big one, gotta get their stuff in, get the light poles in, this new sidewalk. If you go there now, they are forming up the, the curbs, and so it's in progress right now, yeah. I can't give you a date. No, I, I can, but I don't have the schedule in front of me.
And, and once we give you a date.
It won't be right.
It'll be two weeks later.
It would be two weeks after that.
I just didn't know if we're talking about a couple of weeks or three more months. Of course, by three more months, we're gonna be into finish.
I hope it's not three more months.
Right, right.
Right.
That's okay. Thank you. I didn't know if it was just the sidewalk and the putting in the basalt columns or what, so PGE also, we're waiting on them.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I actually had the privilege of working onsite the other day, and the level of respect that is shown amongst all the contractors, I, I'd wanna say there was probably three to four different contractors working onsite, and to see everybody working so harmoniously, I don't know, as a kid, we used to play this game where you had the square pattern and you had one missing, and you had to get all the numbers in line. That was literally how these people worked on the property. Where they're loading dirt into me, they have a conveyor truck coming in and putting dirt into the planter boxes. You had the, oh, the landscape company down, right down the street, sorry, can't remember their name, they're putting in the basalt columns. And it was just, it was, it was really neat to see that kind of work happening all at the same time. Very, very impressed. So, well, thank you for your report, sir.
Yes.
Appreciate all your hard work.
Yep. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, up next. I'm gonna regret this. Oregon Mayors Association Leadership Award. Mr. Huff, can I have your staff report, please?
Well, I don't really have a staff report, other than to let you know that I was afforded an opportunity to go to Baker City and attend part of the Oregon Mayors Association Conference. And that was a session that I worked with a colleague of mine on to talk about relationships between city managers, improving relationships between city managers and mayors, and something that Mayor Kaiser put together, really, and got the committee, the Mayors Association Professional Development Committee to agree to do. And so I happened to be there when our mayor, Scott Kaiser, was awarded the medium-sized city mayor of the year, or he received the leadership award for mayor, for mayors in medium-sized cities. And it's a pretty cool thing for all of us, it's a pretty cool thing for Mayor Kaiser, and once again, we are getting our name out there a little bit more. So it was a fun night, I'm glad I was there. He knew nothing about it. I will tell you that some of us knew about this six weeks before it happened, including his own wife, who kept it completely quiet, and he was totally surprised, knew nothing about it. So, thank you, Scott, for all your hard work.
This city has a very symbiotic relationship between council and staff. Our council works very hard to show the hard work that our staff does for us. Our staff works very hard for us to look good up here. This award isn't mine. This award is a team. Every person that's sitting up here, the city staff, the people in this community, it, things don't get done without everybody's hard work. I kinda look at it as NASCAR. I'm just driving the car. You guys are keeping it running, you're keeping it in shape, you're keeping the tires on it, you're keeping the funding coming in, you know, you get, you got our security for us. It, it's just this big circle. And it's, it's kind of a crazy analogy, but I thank you to everybody. Thank you for your kind letter. Who would've thought five years ago this would be happening?
Not me.
Me neither. Five years ago, my wife didn't think I'd be sitting here. It only cost me a dog. But thank you to everybody. Like I said, I'm just the one, I'm the one who received it. It, this is, this is for everybody. One other really cool thing, my, my wife, they, they give it to you in a nice little frame that it fits in nicely. To me, I'll leave this up front so everybody can look at it. To me, the letter and everything that's in this tells the whole story. And so we have a copy of Mr. Huff's letter. My wife framed all this, put my badge, some city, Malala city stickers in there, but it tells the whole story. And I'm very proud, I'm proud to bring this home for the city. I have not heard if the city's ever gotten this, or mayor's ever gotten this, so there's always a first for everything. I know this was a first for us to get it for medium cities.
Well, that's true.
So we'll take it and run. But our city is being recognized. They're looking at our leadership, and thanks to all of you. I appreciate every one of you, and I love working with you guys. I love working with our staff. I appreciate all of you. And thank you to our voters and our public. And thank you to my wife, who fibbed me again. So, thanks, everybody.
That's nice.
All right, now to the fun stuff. Let's get to work. Public comment. Citizens are allowed, are allowed for up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city, but not listed as an item on the agenda. Prior to speaking, citizens shall complete a comment form and deliver it to the city recorder. The city council does not generally engage in dialogue with those making comments, but may refer the issue to the city manager. Complaints should first be addressed at the department level prior to addressing the city council. This public comment period is for items not on the agenda. If you are speaking on a topic listed on tonight's agenda, you will be provided time to speak later in the meeting. Kristi Linehan, 1,000 Friends of Oregon's, Mary Kyle McCurdy, and Rob Wolfson, are we bringing them up now?
They were in email.
They were in email?
Submission.
Okay.
It's available in your package.
Perfect.
I did not receive any other submissions. Everyone else is here to speak, Mayor.
Okay. And Jody Newland, come on up. You wanna speak twice tonight. Here's your first opportunity.
Welcome back.
Thanks. Hi, Mayor and Council, and our city staff. I just wanted to come in person tonight to turn in my official resignation from our Parks Committee and let you know I'm not angry. I think sometimes we can, like, our words can sound different in writing than they are when you're actually speaking them, so. I wanna say thank you for allowing me to serve long enough to be able to pass the baton to the able leadership of Kristi, our chair, and Nicole, our co-chair. I greatly value fun parks and green spaces for our community to gather and play in. I understand the challenge of working within a budget, which we do have, and I feel that the fundraising that we have been a part of has honored the fact that Malala community members have a budget as well. Not all members of our community can afford more taxes and fees, but many have supported our fundraising efforts as they were able, because they appreciated the willingness to do things the old-fashioned way that we were doing, giving our time, our effort, our energy to back something that we felt passionate about. I hope the spirit of community in Malala never goes away, even as it continues to grow. Volunteering is hard work, which you guys all know, and sometimes it's quite thankless. I know sometimes my hubby hasn't really appreciated the level of pay that it brings, but it makes me proud to say that I've been a part of loving my town. So officially resign as of the end of this month, 8/31/2025. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work on the committee.
All right, seeing no other public comment at this time, we'll bring the rest up in a little bit. We'll go to public hearings. First public hearing is ordinance number 2025-08, modifying the development code by allowing fueling stations in the Central Commercial C1 zoning district, subject to special use standards. Ordinance number 2025-08, modifying the development code by allowing fuel station, stations in Central Commercial C1 zoning district, subject to special use standards, requires a public hearing. I will open this public hearing at 7:49. Do council members wish to acknowledge an actual or potential conflict of interest? All right, moving on. Mr. Zinder, council is ready for your staff report.
All right. Planning Manager Dan Zinder to present the staff report for ordinance 2025, await fueling stations in the C1 central commercial zone, subject to special use standards.
Mr. Zinder, you're not coming yet. We can't hear you.
Oh, okay.
We have the screen share.
Oh, and screen share. Okay. Maybe it's not the mic.
Once I screen share.
All right. No, try. We're almost there. Shit, now we're, now we're on. All right.
That's good, that's good. Okay, so we're on, we're on, and now this, okay. That's that. But now, how does this go away? Okay, so presenting the staff report, and now for overview. So, this, this issue came up as part of the economic opportunities analysis. During the hearings for the economic opportunities analysis, the city received public comment advising that we revisit whether fueling stations should be allowed in the C1 Central Commercial Zone. We did, and we were advised to put that by council into the development code memo that was submitted with the economic opportunities analysis, which was adopted in February of 2025. In a work session on, for April 9th, we brought several options for how to proceed with this to city council, including conditional use permit, keeping things the same, special use standards. And then council advised that we look at bringing an ordinance forth that would allow fueling stations in the downtown zone, subject to special use standards. And those would include screening, access considerations, and proximity to residential uses. So, those were the main ones that were concerned. And then another one came up during the, during the ordinance process. All right. I may just have to, I may just have to keep this small. So, currently, the following use is not permissible in the C1 Central Commercial Zone. It's a long, it's a long one, automotive repair and services, including fueling stations and a number of other uses related to automotive repair and service. This use category is permissible in the light industrial and general commercial zones. In the new ordinance, the automotive repair and service category gets split into two categories. Automotive repair and services and the whole litany of other uses, and those would remain restricted to the light industrial and general commercial zones. And automotive fueling stations, excluding electric charging stations, which are addressed in a different section, as an accessory use, so sort of separate ball wax, and we're keeping it that way. And so, those would also, in addition to the M1 and C2, that use would be allowed now in the C1 zone, subject to special use standards. And this is the map showing that. We have the sort of light red pinkish solid color for the general commercial zone. Your, the light purple is your light industrial. And then the hash-marked area in the center is the C1 zone, where we're considering allowance. So, on to the special use standards that we're proposing. The first one is that screening will be required. And for that, we're advising a five-foot landscape buffer, similar to what's shown in the transparent picture behind us, only, you know, five feet, a little smaller than that. So, some sort of screening element between three and four feet high that screens at least 75% of the right-of-way frontage. We've left that a little bit open to interpretation, you know, so things, something to sort of beautify the walkway and make it look good. And we left it a little vague, so to give the developer some leeway in developing fencing and vegetative screening that could serve that purpose. And so, these elements really help make, continue to make the downtown walkable, should these uses arise. They'll be comfortable to walk next to, you're not up, next to a bunch of cars coming and going. So, you add this use, but keep walkability. And then, the last piece being, if the, if the service station abuts residential uses, a six-to-eight-foot fence would go between them. So, the second special use standard we're advising is proximity to residential uses. Fueling stations shall not be sited on parcels where 50% or more of the subject property, property lines border residential uses. So, whether that's across the street or right next to it, if it's, if you're in an area that's primarily residential, that's sort of not what we're looking for here. The next one is the special transportation area excluded. So, while we were crafting this ordinance, one of the things that we did, and we reached out to all interested agencies for public comment, but we, especially considering some of the conversations that have happened a little late recently, we reached out to ODOT early, and their response back was, well, there's, and it's a comment that was included in this packet. So, not during the official comment period, but just as part of our inquiry, and we thought that we'd, we'd share that, was that there's the special transportation area that exists between Hard Ave and Grange Ave. These areas are intended to provide pedestrian-friendly corridors, limited vehicle access points, reducing speed, and promoting uses that reduce trip count. Not advising to have, you know, a lot of onsite parking, more street parking areas, and the idea is to encourage walkability. And so, for us, it was a point well taken. And I'll sort of show the map here. That purple hash mark within the, within the red is the special transportation area. There is a pre-existing non-conforming station that's, that is there, that's being developed at this time. This ordinance doesn't affect the redevelopment of that, that station. But it would prohibit subsequent stations in that area. And the point was well taken, and so we did, we do have in the ordinance to remove basically that area from, from the ordinance. Access and circulation considerations. So, we want to make sure that the servicing trucks are able to get completely onsite, circulate the site, and leave the site. And that no portion of the truck will be in the right-of-way or sidewalk or anywhere while tanks are being serviced. So, in addition to, that, it'll be part of the truck turning templates that are pretty standard for our design reviews, but we sort of specify that. Last, I don't have any slides for this, but the EV standards, again, they're not affected. So, that's, that's basically, they remain, and they're part of the code under parking standards. So, a couple of comments on how this ordinance meets the applicable criteria. First, for noticing, we met all the applicable noticing requirements to DLCD, affected government agencies, interested parties, newspaper, and website. Those entities were all contacted within the required noticing period. In my, in my report, I put two, the Goal 9 downtown development policies, for no extra charge. I'm throwing in a Goal 12 policy as well in this report to, report to council. So, basically, that the city shall encourage and identify new businesses to occupy the CBD in order to create active and vibrant districts. The central business district shall provide a variety of services, cultural, recreational, social, professional, and governmental activities. So, basically, the idea is here, is by, we're allowing a new use, we're increasing the variety, we're bringing people that are coming from, you know, recreational corridors and to our downtown, you know, like the Mall River Corridor, maybe people are coming back from that. And those people will now be able, will have another reason to stop in the downtown and go to other uses. So, increase the variety, but also, there's some things in the special use standards to ensure that the gas stations don't become sort of a use that sort of overtakes the downtown as well. So, likely, strengthen the city of Malala's business community by considering implementation of a mixed-use central business district that concentrates pedestrian-oriented and commercial retail uses within a district that's easily walkable. Our special use standards ensure the walkability around these stations that are developed, as they're developed. And then again, we leave that special transportation area alone, so that, you know, further auto uses aren't brought down there. So, last, there's a, there's a criteria, is the ordinance in the public interest. And again, for the reasons that were above, you know, bringing, sort of bringing more in a variety of uses and redeveloping undeveloped, redeveloping certain sites, developing undeveloped sites are a part of this, but also specifically whether it responds to a change in the community. The change would be, you know, our downtown core is pretty built out, and so the risk of fueling stations overwhelming other uses is pretty low. Some of these uses are here to stay. So, and last, that, that transportation planning rule, and in this case, it doesn't apply. There's not a zone change that's proposed, and the proposed use allowance is consistent with commercial zoning, except in the special transportation area again, and then additional, the additional special use standards encourage walkability, which is encouraged by the transportation planning rule. So, with that, I provide staff recommendation that council adopt this ordinance, and we move forward. Thank you very much.
All right.
Oh, yeah, right. There's one more.
I wondered where the, I wondered.
I knew that was coming.
It has, it has to. I'll save it for the fun ones, you know.
So, I usually go first. Does anybody else have questions first? Okay, I guess I will go then. In your report, Mr. Zinder, you brought up a separation between residential and the gas stations or fueling stations with a fence, six to eight feet. What type of fencing? Are we gonna get specific in the fencing? Is it gonna, cyclone, I would think, is probably what the recommendation's gonna be. And is it gonna be the ones that have the slats in it, so they're not, they can't be viewed from either side, or have we not decided on this yet?
I probably ought to have included sight obscuring fence, you know, that meets, meets fencing standards. All right?
If I'm blindsiding you on this, I, I can, we can discuss it another, I can take a message another time. I didn't mean to do that. I read this and was literally, when you said that, it came to mind, and I apologize for catching you guys off guard.
No, no worries.
See, Matt, can we add stuff to it?
They can absolutely amend.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to, if you wanted to advise, recommend putting sight obscuring in there, I mean, that was, that was intended, and it was a good catch on your part.
Okay.
So, yes, you can do that.
Yeah, I, I think having the cyclone that has the slats in it, so
Yeah.
It's not visible either direction. I mean, it's gonna protect the resident, their privacy from someone being behind the gas station and looking their direction and vice versa. It won't be such an eyesore, them looking toward the gas station also.
Yeah, I mean, I imagine that'll be more, but it could be, you know, it could be wood, something else like that. But yeah, absolutely. That's, that's a great point.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have a question about the foliage or some other sort of thing on the front of the station.
Yeah.
And if you're on Highway 211, for example, there's not much space there to produce anything like that. How would that work?
These weren't, weren't, aren't allowed on 211, right?
Hmm?
Special transportation area?
There's, there's some places where it would be. I mean, this, they're, they're, so the question, the question is, is there going to be space for, for hedging or something like that?
Correct. Is there going to be sufficient space? And if there's not, then what do we do?
I think that sort of determines how the sites are picked, really. Some, some of the sites simply won't be suitable for, for fueling stations as a result of this. I mean, I think there's a couple, we can look at some of the larger sites and some of the deeper sites, and that five-foot buffer plus, you know, plus a hedge really won't impact that. But you're, you're looking at, I mean, for a gas station, you're really looking at a site that's at least half acre to three, three-quarters acres to begin with. So, I, and I know, you know, I know certainly one of the sites that people, or that are being considered for that. And actually, one of them already has that. One of them already has that.
That's correct. One has it, and one doesn't have a space for it. We have two sites in town that are being developed as we speak. And one of them has space for it. It's a brand-new development. Another one is an existing development, and there is not space for hedging.
So, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this. So, the, the direct answer to your last question is, they won't be able to build there if they can't fit that stuff there on that, on that site. So, that's the simple answer, is that if they can't fit that in, then they can't build a gas station there. But right now, you have a pre-existing non-conforming gas station. So, they, they get to build, they get to reopen
They don't have.
As they were situated before. So, this won't impact them. The new, the new one is not within the same zone as in the C2, so they're subject to our other regulations in the development code.
Right.
Does that, does that answer your question?
That answers my question perfectly.
Yeah, and, yeah, and for the record, that, that entity actually has their building permits
Okay.
Already, so they're, they're, they're on their way.
Thank you.
There's, there's a couple of things we're working out with them, but they're on their way.
Anybody else? All right. Public comment for this item is now open. Council has received submissions from Wendy Kellington of Kellington Law Group and Neelam Dorman from ODOT. Kristi, was there any other email submissions?
No, sir.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor or opposition? Okay. If no, I will close this public.
You have Wendy.
Oh, come on up. State your name and business for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Wendy Kellington. I'm a lawyer with the Kellington Law Group, and I represent Sonny Singh and the Center Market. Congratulations on your award. That's huge. I know, that's a very big deal.
Thank you, ma'am.
And also, congratulations to Dan, being the planning manager. I didn't realize that that had happened either. So, that's, these are very big developments. Thanks for letting me talk. All I want to do is to let you know what a wonderful, constructive, working relationship that we've had through this process with your staff. They've done a great job with the standards, working with your citizens. As you know, Sonny and the Center Market have been involved in this process since the Planning Commission recommended that you make this adjustment. And it's, it's just been a really constructive process. You're very lucky to have the group of folks you have. So, we're just here to support the proposal and answer any questions, if you have any.
All right. I apologize. I have a lot of people, or a lot of slips up here, so I apologize for missing you.
You know, I'm just happy to be here. Thank you.
Anybody have questions or comments? All right. Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I may, this is relevant to the public comment received from Neelam Dorman from ODOT. And so, I wanted to make sure that while we had the public hearing open, we addressed this.
Okay.
So, that, that comment was received early on in the process, during the first kind of rendition of this ordinance. And I think Mr. Zinder talked about this, but I just wanted to make sure that it was, it got out there, because it was kind of mixed in with some stuff. We did obviously take measures to do the special use standards and those sorts of things. And part of that was in response to ODOT's comment. We resubmitted this document for comment with the updated standards and have not received comment back from ODOT. So, the comment that you're looking at is relevant to a prior rendition of this ordinance, and we have not received public comment, meaning that silence is acquiescence with these public agencies.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. All right. If nobody else wishes to speak on this... All right, if nobody else wishes to speak on this, I will close this public hearing Up next, Housing Production Strategy Work Plan. The Housing Production Strategy Work Plan requires a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at 8:10. Do council, do any council members wish to acknowledge any actual or potential conflicts of interest? All right, Mr. Cortheau, we are ready for your staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. As most of you are aware by now, House Bill 2003 passed a couple of years ago, and it requires each city over $10,000 to adopt a housing production strategy, and cities that are larger than that to adopt a few more things, but at any rate, it requires the city of Malala to adopt a housing production strategy. You guys have been through this process now twice, so I think you're very familiar with it. I just want to point out that, so this is a remand from DLCD on our second rendition of our housing production strategy. I want to point out that we did utilize a DLCD consultant from their list on this project who did an excellent job with it. We had a DLCD member on our TAC team, our Technical Advisory Committee, that was at every single meeting and did not offer any, well, most of this comment, and that the comments that I am seeing, many of them are not in any way supported by the administrative rule of statute. We're working through other channels to try and deal with some of this, what I would call overreach. These things are fairly vague, but in the interim, DLCD has offered to pay for the consultant to do the rest of this work, these four conditions that they want us to look into. So staff's intention is to proceed with that, so as not to cost taxpayers of Malala any more money should we deny that and fail in our attempts to rectify this issue through other channels. So that's kind of my, my monologue on this. I thought it was important that you guys know those things and that the folks in the audience know those things. We're seeing things here that, like I said, they're just not supported by statute, and some of them are so vague, it's unclear exactly what they're even saying. So at any rate, the cherry on that cake, as it were, is that DLCD has offered to give us a grant to complete this work, and the only thing that we really need to work on is the four points that they provided in the memo, not the whole thing anew. So this is the work plan that we have concocted in order to complete this work and get it done, and if you guys approve of this work plan, then we'll submit it to DLCD for final approval, and we'd be able to move on down the road, get this thing corrected, for the last time, I hope.
All right. For all of those listening that have been involved in coming and publicly speaking on where our UGB goes, this is a great example of your voices were heard. Staff, myself, we fought, and we got the governor's office to pay attention, and so they are offering to do another study. Hopefully, that study moves it from the south side of the city to another direction of the city.
And, and that is true. I just want to point out, this is a different process.
Okay.
So this is different, that, that, what you've said is true, we are applying for funding, and we are eligible for that funding, and we were initially told that we were not until the governor's office made a phone call, and then miraculously, we were eligible for the funding. I believe we were always eligible for the funding based on the rules of the funding, but again, fairly significant overreach is what I've witnessed over and over again. I did, there's no way to sugarcoat it, and I know they're watching, but it's factual. So at any rate, yeah, that, that is something we're working on separate to get funding for those studies to see where the UGB should go under Goal 14. This is specific to the housing production strategy that we have to adopt under HP 2003.
Okay. Perfect. Any questions, comments, feedback?
I'd just like to say, thank you so much for your patience and endurance in this, because it's been quite the fight.
Appreciate it.
For all of you. As much to you.
Appreciate it very much.
I'll tag along with that. You guys have been awesome, all of staff. I really appreciate you guys hearing the public. Anybody else? All right. Christie, do we have any public comment for this?
Not for this item, Mayor.
All right. Does anybody wish to speak in favor or oppose this? Seeing none, I will adjourn this hearing at 8:15. Okay, up next, ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 2025-08, modifying the development code by allowing fueling stations in central commercial C1 zoning districts, subject to special use standards. Mr. Zinder, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I think we've talked it through, um.
I've, I've got just one procedural item to add, and the city recorder can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but I, it appears to me that you guys are considering an amendment to the ordinance, so it will require a reading at a separate meeting, so we cannot adopt tonight. It just, I just wanted everyone to know that.
And is that on the fencing?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cortheau.
Absolutely.
So we could have a motion with the amendment tonight?
Correct.
And then we'll have to bring it back for second reading?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Having held a public hearing for this ordinance, we are ready to consider a motion for approval.
I'll move to hold the first reading, is it the first reading? First reading of ordinance number 2025-08, modifying the development code by allowing fueling stations in the central commercial C1 zoning district, subject to special use standards by title only, which will include the amendment of the fencing, is that?
Sight obscuring.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yep.
All right, Christie, we call a roll.
Certainly, Counselor Gilmer.
Aye.
Counselor Schenkel.
Aye.
Counselor Childress.
Aye.
Council President Vermillion.
Aye.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Thank you. Vote passes 6-0.
All right, we will look forward to seeing that on another agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, general business, housing production strategy work plan. Mr. Cortheau, do you have anything else you wish to add?
No, sir, only that the, the work plan is attached to the public hearing document as Exhibit A. I think you guys have had a chance to review it, it's fairly straightforward.
All right. Having held a public hearing for this ordinance, we're ready to consider a motion for approval.
My apologies.
Yeah?
It's not an ordinance, it's a work plan, so.
Okay.
I'm held the public hearing for the work plan. Sorry, ma'am.
So we don't, we don't need, we're done?
Need a motion.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve the work plan.
I move that the city of Malala approved the Housing Production Strategy Work Plan dated August 20th, 2025.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? All right, Christie, we call the roll.
Certainly, Counselor Gilmer.
Aye.
Counselor Schenkel.
Aye.
Counselor Childress.
Aye.
Council President Vermillion.
Aye.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Thank you. Vote passes 6-0.
All right, up next, discussion, Park CPC. Mr. Huff, can we have your staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So in your packet, on page 68, it's a big packet, there's a short memo in there that talks a little bit about Park CPCs, and I don't need to read through the memo itself specifically, but I did want to say, this is on the agenda because at your meeting in, your last meeting in July, I think it was the last meeting in July, the mayor asked that this item be placed on the agenda, and I think the mayor's words were to suspend the Park CPC committee. And so if you look, if you look through the memo that we provided in your, your packet, I also wanted to add that CPCs actually came out of the, the Vision and Action Plan. It was a, it was a way to create committees that could work on items that the city had, and we've had a few of them throughout, throughout the time since that plan was adopted. We had an Economic Development Community Program Committee. It, it, it was active, and then when the Economic Development Plan was completed, that, that committee ceased to meet. We had one for the police building, and when we got to a point where we didn't need that committee anymore because the bond passed and we were, we were moving forward with construction, that committee ceased to meet. So that was the original intention of how these committees were work, were to work. And in, in the case of the Park Community Program Committee, things have changed with, with how we have to operate as a city. We, we do provide staff support for, for minutes and agendas and keeping records, and my assistant provides that service to the Beautification and Culture Committee, and the Deputy City Recorder provides that service for the Park CPC. So initially, we didn't have those kinds of commitment from a staff, at a staff level, and, and so that is one big change, and that's a cost to the city, because we are, we are paying folks to do that, and it takes some of their time away from some of their other duties that they need to be doing. That's not necessarily a problem, but if there's additional duties added on to those kinds of services, that's where it starts to, to creep into staff time. This is not a referendum on how much money the Park CPC has been able to raise, if they do a good job, because I know these people work really hard, and in, in raising money on a consistent basis, it's a very difficult task to continue to do, and, and they have done that. And we have used those funds at a city level to help provide some gap funding. More recently, we used it when we, we needed some gap funding available for the Park, Clark Park Pavilion. Hope you all looked at it when you were at Celebrate Malala, it's a pretty cool project. But it's usually a smaller amount of money that kind of helps us finish a project. It doesn't pay for the entire project. As you all know, our projects are very expensive. And we've even added some funding to the park fund when we sold the bowling alley lanes. So we, we put part of those funds into the Beautification and Culture Committee to help pay for the art in front of the police department, and so the tax, tax dollars did not go into that. The other, the other portion of those, the sale went to the park fund. Our issue at this point, and what I would suggest that you do, is because we actually have made this very clear, we did this when we, when we talked about this at your budget discussions, that we are not actively pursuing additional park projects, other than taking care of what we already have, until we find a better revenue source that can pay for these things that we have, we're just not doing it right now. I mean, we, we can, we can use systems development charge, funding that we've developed for new capital items. The problem we're having is, we still have to maintain it, so we're kind of at our limits here, and we are not a fundraising organization, and my suggestion to you all is that you just suspend the Park CPC until we're at a point where we can actually focus in on doing those projects. And I know you have folks that are coming to talk to you tonight, and I want to make sure that you know, this is not a referendum on that. It's really just, maybe it's a referendum on the, on city staff. We just, we just are not doing projects. Once we finish a few of these, we're probably done for, for quite a while.
Okay.
And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Oh, I shouldn't say that. We have talked to them in the past, they've talked to us. We're also not, we're not able to provide advice to the folks on becoming a nonprofit because we're not one, and that's, that's some advice they're going to have to get from, obtained from someone else. We've heard them discuss, maybe that's what they should do, and in that, it would take us out of the picture of receiving funds and holding it, they can do that on their own. We can't accept payments, you know, like through Venmo or things like that, those are things we cannot do, and, and I know they've talked about it, they've mentioned they want to pursue that, and so the suspension of the committee might help them seek that, if they want to do that or not.
So basically, what you're saying is, is if the suspension happens tonight, there's nothing stopping this group from meeting tomorrow on their own accord?
Absolutely not.
And starting, and working toward getting a 501(c)(3) going, doing whatever fundraising they want to do?
Sure.
And then, as far as the fundraising goes currently, is, Christie, is that an issue with ethics? Is that the reason why we're having issues with? I know there's a bunch of new ethics rules, and I'm not saying there's an issue with it now, but are we trying to say we're not getting into the funding area with that because of ethics?
So, Mayor, to answer your question, I'm going to have to refer a little bit to City Manager Huff, but it, it's not related to ethics.
Okay.
It is more Finance Department-related in regard to the city can be the, cannot be the clearinghouse for fundraising.
Okay.
I'll turn it over.
And what, we've created a fund in, in our, in our budget that can accept park donations. Okay, so if somebody comes in and says, hey, here's, here's a $10 check, I want to donate this to the park. We can accept that money, put it in that park fund, and give the person a receipt if they need one. That's really as far as we can, we can go with those things. What we can't do is be the finance manager for that, for the group to go outside and have you, you know, provide them payment through a credit card, or send a Venmo to pay for something or things like that. Those are things we cannot do. And so it's, it's become a little bit of a problem for the, for the folks to raise money, because that's, you know, Celebrate Malala was a great, great example, you know, you, they, they have a credit card, they'll accept a credit card, or they won't accept a credit card, or they'll do Venmo, or whatever it might be, we're just not set up to do that, and we can't be, because it has to attach to a Gmail account or something like that. We don't have Gmail accounts at the city. That's just not how we, we operate. So that would give, becoming a 501(c)(3) would give them a little bit more freedom to do those kinds of things outside of us. That doesn't mean we still won't accept donations, because we will, because we're already set up to accept them, but we just can't do the finance portion of that.
Okay.
So.
Questions? Comments?
It's actually time for public comment now, Mayor.
Yeah.
And then moving on to council discussion.
Yeah.
Great.
All right. Up first, Jody Newland.
So I wrote down some thoughts, because I'm much better at, like, writing my thoughts out than just speaking them, so I have to share. It was rather deflating to hear on the first day of our garage sale fundraiser that council was going to be discussing ending the Parks Committee without ever coming to speak to us first. I went back and I watched the meeting for myself, and the only thing mentioned was the cost to the city with a new requirement stepped by the state, and I don't know exactly all the details of those requirements. When we originally started this committee, it was formed for two reasons. First, a less formal meeting to make recommendations to council on behalf of our parks. The state have, has obviously taken away the ability to be less formal. The second reason was to encourage community involvement, and that goal shouldn't be changing. It should be a goal of every government agency in the United States because we are a representative form of government. Sometimes this does come with a price tag. I have a couple of suggestions in order for the Park Committee to continue while still cutting costs to the city. I'm not just here to complain. Originally, we kept our own meeting minutes, we turned them into the city, and then a staff person was assigned to us. We did not request this, and I think that we could go back to the original. We did not request this, and I think that we could go back to the original method. If the minutes needed to be in a certain format for the city, they could provide a template for us to use, so that it's in whatever they need for the city recorder. Currently, the Parks meetings have also been scheduled to take place most often at City Hall, which also requires a staff person to be present to let us in and out of the building. This isn't necessary. They could meet at public parks, or even at our library. Both of these suggestions would eliminate the need for a staff person to attend the meeting, and this could be applied to the Beautification and Culture Committee as well, because I know they have a staff person too. We were informed at our last meeting that future flyers or letters needed to be made by our committee members, not our staff liaison, and turned into the city for printing. This, of course, would also cut back on staff time, which we're okay with. I would like to see this committee continued as they decide how to move forward and whether they want to pursue becoming a nonprofit. I would hate to see the energy that we had end with just the rug being pulled out from underneath them, and it's done. The committee still has some great ideas to pursue. They wanted to help with weed control and fertilization of our parks that is not currently being budgeted for. Thank you for taking these ideas into consideration.
Thank you. Up next, Kristi Hodgkinson. Can you state your name and city residing? Sorry, I forgot to do that with Jody. I'm sure she's probably still got a file.
Yeah. Kristi Hodgkinson, of Malala, Oregon.
Nicole Jung, of Malala.
All right.
Thank you.
We're here to talk on behalf of the Malala Parks CPC. I'm the standing chair, and this is my vice chair. So I wanted to come and speak with you guys. To say as a group, we were surprised by the discussion of potentially closing successful program is an understatement. At our most recent meeting, members expressed their disappointment at learning secondhand about the possibility. As dedicated volunteers, we feel both hurt and disrespected. In the future, we urge that decisions of this magnitude be communicated directly to city volunteer groups before public discussion. The staff report indicates that our group is using 18 to 24 hours of staff time each month. We respectfully disagree with this estimate. To improve clarity, we request a log of staff hours, including which projects they were applied to. This would allow us to identify tasks we can complete on our own, reducing our reliance on the city staff. We also note that some of the additional hours may stem from city requirements that were not in place when we began. For example, we are now required to have a city liaison at meetings to take minutes, despite our group being capable of handling this on our own. Similarly, the liaison has voluntarily taken on tasks we could easily complete independently. Any questions we may have directed towards the city could be answered by our city council liaisons. Previously, the city volunteered us the use of their advertising specialists. That sense has been taken from us, and we will be handling all advertising on our own in the future. Meeting at City Hall, which requires staff time to open the building, is another example of unnecessary use of staff resource. These are areas where our group can reduce the city's burden. If we had been made aware of overuse of staff hours prior to this staff report, I'm confident that our group would have found ways to handle things on our own. The staff report provided tonight shows the amounts we were able to give to help fund city park projects, but it does not highlight the growth of our group. In the year 2223, we raised 2,886.50. In 2324, we raised 5,395.7. And in 2425, we raised 11,518. You can see our growth. To bring a sudden stop to this group would undo all the hard work we've done to make a name for ourselves in this community. Regarding finances, we have discussed multiple times in our meetings and with the city manager about our need for a bank account to be able to accept card payments. We understand we are at a crossroads. And establishing a nonprofit would allow us to continue our growth. Dissolving the group at this stage would undo years of progress, and we would lose our momentum. It has also been suggested that our CPC is no longer needed, since no new parks are planned in the immediate future. However, our work has never been limited to new parks. Many of our projects focus on updating and maintaining existing parks. For example, we are actively working towards updating Clark Park play equipment, providing gap funding to bring true green back to service our parks in the area, completing the toddler area at Fox Park. In closing, while this process has strained our once-strong relationship with city staff, we remain committed to serving the community, and we sincerely hope the city will partner with us to rebuild trust, expectations, and continue improving our parks together. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Up next, Sarah Lynn Povey. Come to the mic. State your name and city you reside in, please.
My name is Sarah Lynn Povey, and I'm a longtime Malala resident. I've also regularly attended the Parks CPC. When I heard talk of the CPC being sidelined, I did some research. I read documents, financial reports, years of Facebook posts until my head hurt. And I came to you today not as a CPC attendee, but as a community member. Someone who cares deeply about our parks, our process, and the people who keep showing up. The CPC gave residents a clear channel to engage. Before the committee was formed, information was scattered, decisions were made quietly, and public input was more symbolic than real. The CPC changed that process. It gave people a reason to care and a place to be heard. Here is my truth. The hours and energy spent haven't really matched what the city is capable of sustaining. Therefore, it's not sustainable, not for fundraising and not for long-term impact. I also explored transitioning into a nonprofit. Between startup costs, administration requirements, and ongoing expenses, I don't see that viable at this time either. We'd be spending more energy just maintaining the structure and not the park, which I believe is what the city is also struggling with. Should the CPC be discontinued, sidelined, or suspended, I urge the city to consider the following path forward: Help the volunteers understand how they can continue their work. Because the work still needs to happen. And our park community heroes haven't gone anywhere. Parks and green spaces aren't just amenities. They're foundations for happy, healthy kids and thriving communities. The work they have done needs to continue. Maybe it's done by spreading the word. Maybe it's organizing cleanups or encouraging sponsorships. Maybe it's simply keeping people informed. The CPC was built to bridge a gap, and the people who showed up to do that work is still here and still willing to help. I believe there's still a way forward, even without the structure of the city, even without the title of a nonprofit, at least until it is sustainable. Because that work matters, and the people who care are still here.
Council, questions, discussion? Go ahead, council to me.
What I'm hearing is, there's nothing, even if we vote to suspend the CPC, there's nothing stopping, excuse me, this group from continuing to meet and moving forward, correct?
Correct.
So, yeah. Because I'm hearing from some of the people giving testimony that it's like we're shutting you down. And that's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is, you'll be suspended, meaning that staff will not be working in that capacity that they have been. And you'll be able to move out, excuse me, on your own, I better take a drink of water, and continue on. And, you know, you do have some great momentum, and I would say, continue that by pursuing what has been recommended to you. I know that, you know, I've been attending your meetings along with Council Gilmer, and I think beginning April-ish, June, I was presenting that, hey, we're at a crossroads. And, you know, your main function here is fundraising, and you're losing your ability, your bank, basically, when the friends of the library step back. And, you know, that's where I was encouraging you to pursue stepping out on your own. Because your main function, I shouldn't say your main function, but a large piece of your function was the fundraising. Your fundraising also brought some collaboration from the community. It was also highlighting our parks, and you were championing our parks for us. And I'm saying, continue. You don't need the city to continue, period. So, that's what I have.
Kristi, clarifying question. Did OGECC change rules that we have to have staff do their minutes during their meetings this year?
Mayor, from the conception of CPCs, the answer would be yes. From this year, no. Everyone, including the Park CPC members, were involved in the March 12th OGECC training that was held here and took up two and a half hours of our life that we'll never get back. So the rules have not changed in the last 12 months. They have changed from the conception of Park CPCs.
So the understanding of the rules, there was a different, we had a different understanding. That's the reason why we had to supply a speaker, someone to take minutes during their meetings?
Correct. Along with part of the ordinance that was adopted by council in 2019, when we began the CPCs, is that part of the rules of each community program committee would be that they would follow state guidelines. Well, now, state guidelines have, unfortunately, in this instance, the state guidelines have changed. So the ordinance remains the same, the rules are a little bit different than when things initially started.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yep.
It's all right.
There, go ahead. Oh, give me one. There was a misconception that, and I think I talked to a few people, that I was against the Park CPC. I never came to one of your meetings, and I intentionally don't go to these meetings. I don't go to Beautification and Culture. There's this unspoken, when the mayor shows up, the mayor's in charge, and I don't like that. There's liaisons that attend the meetings. I took reports by the liaisons and city staff that it needed to be put on the agenda. I followed our city's rules, procedures, and got it put on the agenda. Everybody got time to come and publicly speak regarding it today. So whether it happened, whether the information got out the day before the garage sale or two days after, this is the procedure that the city council follows. We did it very publicly. There was nothing behind any doors. We deliberated. We said we were going to do this tonight. And we did it while I was here. It could have been done at the last council meeting when I was out of town. We intentionally did this tonight with our entire, what we have is an entire council here tonight. This is nothing personal. The city is a business. We all sit at this table in charge of a budget. And, yes, our budget did pass this year. But it's with the understanding that we don't have a lot of room to waste any money anywhere. And if there's a place that money isn't being spent wisely, I'm sorry, I have to make a decision on it. This council has to make a decision on that. So, like I said, don't think this is something personal. You know, I've asked questions of our liaisons on, how long have you guys been talking? You know, Council Remilian hit on it, I think he said April. You brought up, you know, the suggestion of becoming a nonprofit. So I just, like I said, this isn't personal. I've never been to your guys' meetings. It's just my job as the mayor to bring this to council for council to make a decision. Council Childress, did you have your hand up?
I did. I have a couple of things. Number one, if we suspend the CPC, the individuals who are now working in the CPC try to go forward without the umbrella of the city, they have no backing. And I would think that people would be less likely to participate with that group. So I see that as not a viable future. Having worked in a 501(c)(3) environment and having actually created one myself several years back, I say that's not a viable thing to do, because it's very expensive. There are tax returns and reports to be prepared every year. Your costs just continue, and you would be wise if you set one up to use an attorney, and that's a very expensive process. I learned that the hard way. Having said that, I don't know that I have a suggestion other. It's unfortunate to me for the staff of the city that OGECC changed, that the rules changed and that we have to have a staff member at our meetings. We didn't like that when it changed for us. I didn't like it because we were using city funds to cover a committee, where the rules said that we could have our own secretary and submit the minutes like we were doing. But we have no control over that. Unfortunately, there are several things that we have no control over. So, having said that, I'm not sure that I have a suggestion, which is unfortunate, because I don't like to present, you know, the negative and not have a suggestion for a good path forward, other than continuing the committee. And it would still require city staff to be on hand for the meetings. And it's just as easy to, if you have city staff on hand, it doesn't matter if you're meeting at the city hall or at a park or wherever. It's just the time involved there. Is there a way to cut back on expenses that the city staff has been incurring? Possibly so. Possibly there's a misunderstanding. Possibly something hasn't been made clear or been misunderstood. And so that might be a bridge to look at. That's the end of what I have to say.
I know.
Nothing real encouraging there. I apologize.
Well, and nothing really solves the issue of credit card, being able to accept credit card things. Whether you do the 501(c), which is, you're right, it's going to cost a lot, and you can't do it through the city, so.
There was? Yes, sir?
I, excuse me. I've also been involved with the 501(c)(3), where I was there at the conception of it, where we applied for it. I don't see the expense over, I mean, it cost us less than $300.
To start it up?
To start it up, through the Secretary of State. I did not, I mean, I used an accountant that gave me some advice, didn't charge me anything for that. That could be where the cost is, if you're using an attorney or somebody else. But it is very simple to go through the process.
Mr. Mayor?
We also had to file with the IRS.
Yep.
And most companies do have to file with, well, you do have to file with an IRS to get a tax-exempt standing. And I don't know how you did it for $300. I think that's great. The filing fee alone was more than that. So perhaps there is an avenue for them to explore, perhaps... So, perhaps there is an avenue for them to explore, perhaps they need to explore that Even then, there is an issue because of 501(c)(3), the donations have to be made directly to the organization. Venmo and other things are private telephone apps. And you can't set up a Venmo app in the name of the CEO of the corporation because that's a conflict of interest. Lots of really tight rules there. But, it's, I'm not, I'm not going, I didn't mean to discourage you from pursuing that. And if Councilor Vermillion has some experience in that, that costs a lot less, he may know some things I don't. And things may have changed since we did it. It may be more slick now than it was when we did it. A slicker process, so.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir?
Just a couple of comments. One, there is, there has been a large change since we've started providing staff to, to each of these committees, to both the BNC and Parks. I can tell you that the amount of time we spend with the BNC versus Parks is a, is a very different level of, of time, okay? And it might be because we have, because of the two individuals that are part of the BNC that are also on your city council, but, I don't know. But, one of the things that is very different about the Parks Committee today than, than previously was we, the, the city council liaisons were in charge of the committee with former Councilor Newland and former Councilor Robles. They actually were the chair and, or co-chairs, actually, I think is how you set them up. That may be a change that you look at, okay? Because I do think that the mayor is correct in that, you know, people think that if you want to make a change on something like that, people tend to just all of a sudden assume, hey, we don't like the Parks. Well, that's not true. You know, Mac and his staff take very good care of the Parks. If we didn't care about the Parks, they wouldn't look like they look today. And if you looked at them today, they looked pretty darn good. And we care about them, we believe in them, and this community loves them, and we know that. So, our issue of suspension was not to get rid of them as a suggestion, but, you know, if there's another idea out there, I threw a couple of them out there that you guys can consider. And, but we do need, I will tell you, we do need to reduce the staff time, and that has been made clear to them.
Questions, comments? Okay. I leave this up for a motion. And there's a lot of motions, a lot of options here on the table. Second call for a motion. Go ahead.
I'll move that we suspend the Park CPC group until further notice.
Is there a second? Motion dies. All right. We shall move on.
May I, may I make one comment, though, to Kristi? Hopefully, this isn't out of line. But, when they're talking about your staff time, your, in your thing, you were saying you didn't agree with the hours and you wanted a written thing from, from, okay, you can't do that. That's exactly what we're talking about is, thus, where the staff thing is. For them to have to look up information for you on that, there, you're taking up staff time. That's what's costing us. So, don't do that sort of thing. Hopefully, that wasn't out of line.
All right. Moving on.
Mayor Kaiser?
Ma'am.
I have an updated script to hand you.
Okay.
For this next.
Absolutely.
Topic. I realized we had a little bit of a change in the process.
Yeah. I'll take it. So, I probably shouldn't read the thing about Mr. Huff on here. Never mind. City council held candidate interviews during the work session. It is now time to conduct the voting process. I believe you have some forms.
I'll, I'll take it from here.
Okay.
Thank you. So, Community Development Technician Work is going to come around with some ballots for you right now. We discussed at the last work session that the scoring guide would go as such, please choose, you can score, sorry, lost my train of thought, one being the lowest, four being the highest. When you are done scoring each person, then just fold it up and put it just on, you know, by your nameplate and Jess will come around and bring those over to me and City Manager Huff and I all.
Scoring off each question.
Actually, I would like one score per candidate.
Got it.
Okay? So, one score per candidate, four being the highest, one being the lowest.
Where do we put it?
Right out here. Put your score out there.
No, I meant up there.
Oh, she's taking them. Hold them up.
Can you just put them down, one person, or?
No, we're doing each one of them. We're giving each one of them a score. I'm going back. Thank you so much.
So, now you are going to add them up and we shall wait?
Please hold.
Jeopardy music?
Yeah. Da-da-da-da.
I was actually going to do a drum roll, but.
Oh.
The, the part I like about this, Mayor Kaiser, is we're going to know the results and you will not, once again.
There's a lot I don't know. I think our elections office could take a lesson from our city recorder on how to get this done right.
I'd hate to see them taking those ballots one by one and being that's.
I've watched it. It's not pretty.
Oh, Spence is killing me.
Try being in the audience. They're waiting.
I know it. They've had to wait through this whole meeting.
Sorry, I need my calculator. It's late. I don't want to screw this up.
We appreciate you not screwing this up.
Maybe we could be doing our announcements? Do we have any announcements?
Kristi, do you want me to, you, would you like me to try doing staff reports?
No, we are just about there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was asking for a friend.
Oh, I'll bet.
He really was.
Phone in from a friend?
It's like, it's nine o'clock. We want to go home.
So, from this, I can make the mo, you're okay with me making the motion?
Yes, please.
All right. Drum roll, please. Candidate Casey Vicinius. I make a motion, I didn't say it right. One more time. Vicinius, I did do it right. I make a motion to appoint candidate Casey Vicinius to the Malala City Council.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions? Kristi, we call the roll.
Certainly. Councilor Gilmer?
Aye.
Councilor Schenkel?
Aye.
Councilor Childress?
Aye.
Council President Vermillion?
Aye.
Councilor Bartholomew?
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser?
Aye.
Thank you. Vote passes six-zero.
Congratulations, sir. We'll be swearing you in at our next council meeting. Please invite your family and all that good stuff. All right. Thank you.
Thanks to all the candidates as well. It was wonderful to meet you all. And, like I said, we've got Budget Committee openings coming up and an election right around the corner.
And a junior member of council possibility. I know that really makes you happy, too.
Yes, it does.
All right. Last but not least, staff communication. Mr. Zinder?
None for me.
Jessica?
No, sir.
Chief?
Wake up, chief.
We have two officers in our field training program right now. We hired them in July. We're hoping to have them done at around October. As soon as that's done and their training's all squared away, we'll bring them up for you guys and get them sworn in. We have a record specialist in background right now that we are hiring, and we are still currently hiring one police officer. And Joshua hit it really, really spot on. The construction's been going outstanding at the new police department, and we're very excited to move in.
And I heard a rumor you hired someone else in the police station? A familiar face?
Yes. So, our other records, our evidence tech, we ended up hiring, used to be Officer Jennifer Scott, who retired from the Malala Police Department. She now came back to work out of retirement and is our evidence technician.
Very nice.
Great.
You guys have been very busy lately. Thank you. Appreciate all your guys' hard work. Kristi?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, reminder to all of you that registration for the League of Oregon Cities Conference is going on right now. Conference will be held October 2nd through 4th at the Portland Marriott Downtown Waterfront. If you are interested, please contact Executive Administrative Assistant Suzanne Baumann by September 10th. And that might even be too late. I really would suggest that if you are interested in participating, to please get in touch with her. And also, I want to extend a thank you to Jess. Thanks so much for joining us this evening. Jess will be covering for Deputy City Reporter Robles and myself. We are attending the OMR Conference in late September. You'll be without us both, and Ms. Jessica will be here for us. So, thanks for.
So, we don't cancel, cancel city council meetings when you're out of town, huh?
I don't make the rules, Mayor. I have a boss.
City manager?
No.
Yeah.
I think we'll be all right, Mayor.
I, I know we will be. Assistant City Manager Corthell?
I really don't have much. I mean, you guys know the projects that are going on. There's no major issues with any of them, which is great to report, so I think that's good. You know, we're, we're still working through the UGB stuff and the housing production stuff, and we'll continue to do so till that's done. But, yeah, I don't have too much unless you guys have questions on anything that's going on around town.
I do have one.
Yes, sir?
I do have one. No, not a question. An announcement. We have hired an associate planner.
Yeah.
Clarissa Davis has accepted our offer this week. And we're, she's whip-smart, as we've, as shown in the interview, and can't fake that too easy, and we're excited to have her.
Look forward to you bringing her in and introducing her. All right. Anything else, sir?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huff?
Uh, no, I don't have anything specific to bring up today.
Wow.
So.
All right. Councilor Bartholomew?
Concerning the library, the only thing I have is that the attendance for their activities continue to go well. And they possibly could be looking for, well, one of the activities they have out of the many is Dungeons and Dragons for kids. They could be possibly looking for a new game master for that. Currently, it's a library employee that's doing it. And, and that's all, I don't know if, you know, if they're going to take someone outside the library or, or how they're going to go about that. You know, I'm assuming it should have a background check if it's, you know, but that's, that's pretty much what they're doing right there, looking into finding another game master.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Councilor Gilmer?
I have nothing to report.
All right. Councilor Schenkel?
I don't have anything either. I'll let you do it.
Wow. It's all on you.
All on me. Thanks a lot.
What do you got tonight?
Well, I just want to report that we had another successful year at Celebrate Malala, our seventh actual event in eight years. So, are we celebrating a seventh or an eighth anniversary?
Yes.
That's the quandary. Yes, is the answer. Correct. Thank you. So, I thank all of you who came out. It was a hot day, without a doubt. We did lose one food truck a little bit early, but the rest of the food vendors hung in there. And we all stayed till the party was over. So, and I want to thank volunteers who helped. I'm not going to start naming people because I will invariably forget someone since I didn't write them down. But, volunteers make up a lot of what goes on out there. There's a lot of heavy lifting, it's set up and it tear down. And several gentlemen in this room, as a matter of fact, thanks to their strong back, got all that done while I got to point and direct. Thank you so much, men and women. And my team, made up of Terry Schenkel, Roxy Smith, Pamela, Luke, and Kristi Burns, and Victor Plotner. Thank you. Yes. You can't do it alone. And I have a great team that I work with, and they've been faithful year after year, so appreciate that. We'll do it again next year.
In the shade.
In the shade. Possibly even more in the shade. We're looking at trying to move into the trees completely. It'll be challenging, but it'll be worth it if we can make it happen. Thank you so much.
It'll probably be 72 degrees.
And it will be 72 degrees, and people will be chilly. Yes.
You can always put more clothes on.
That's right.
That's true.
Thank goodness you can't take them off. That's right.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Council President Vermillion?
Oh, boy. Yeah, Celebrate Malala was hot. I was there, part of the staff to help set up and tear down. I made the big mistake of trying to keep up with that guy during the teardown.
Yeah.
About passed me out. But, anyway, thanks so much, Mac. You mean, he, he was, he was the rock star there at the end of the day.
That's right, yeah.
He really was. This coming Tuesday, next week, after Labor Day weekend, school starts here in Malala, so please be mindful of the kids and the buses that are going to be out there. This Friday, special session starts. I know that our mayor probably has something to say about that. I'm excited to work with you, Casey. Congrats and get.
Congrats, and get ready to be fed by a fire hose. Lastly, congratulations to our mayor of Malala, Scott Kaiser. This is a tremendous achievement, not only for him, but also for our community. Under his leadership, Malala has gained a champion dedicated to positive change and community growth. Mayor Kaiser is committed, and his vision and passion for our town are sure to inspire progress and unity among all residents. Congratulations, Mayor Kaiser. Mayor, Malala is fortunate to have you at the helm.
Thank you, sir. He's trying to make me cry. Done it twice. Going to hold it together. I haven't been here in a while. I missed the last meeting. Our city's had a lot of great accomplishments. I don't believe, Mr. Huff, we did not discuss the C4 conference. I think we missed a meeting. It was right before.
I think so. You're right.
So, middle of last month, our C4, it's Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, met up at Resort at the Mountain. Council President Hensley was there. One of the biggest issues we have with the county is we're considered a rural city, and we are one of very few in this county. The majority of them are metro cities, lots much bigger, lots more tax dollars rolling into them from good old metro. We're finally being seen at the table. They brought our city manager, Mr. Huff, in. They brought the city manager of Estacada in, Melanie Wagner, and they had a great discussion with the rest of the mayors, electeds, county staff regarding the needs of rural Clackamas County. And I would say the most optimistic sign we had was, at the end, the mayor of Gladstone bringing up that he wants to make sure that rural cities in Clackamas County are at the table, and that they are paying attention to our needs. So, it was very, very optimistic. Appreciate you coming up and speaking, and your colleague, Ms. Wagner. It was a good day. It was better than I thought it would turn out. I almost did not go. Our C4 confer, or, excuse me, our mayor's conference in Baker had its highlights. It was nice to hear Mr. Huff also, again, being invited to speak with his predecessor, colleague, what do you?
He's just a colleague.
What, I call him Miss Padawan.
Yeah, there you go.
He, Jerry has no issue telling everybody that he taught Mr. Huff everything he knows. And if you can, if you can imagine the humor in this right now, this is what this class consisted of. There was some very good dialogue regarding relationships, and it wasn't just mayor, city manager. It can be brought down to the council level. So, it was a very good conference. It was a very long drive. It was wonderful spending time with my wife. So, look forward, I, I, it was, it was overall, it was a good conference. Up next, we have our LOC conference. It's the 100th anniversary down at the Marriott. Looking forward to seeing who all goes to that. There should be a lot of good education there, and unfortunately, the, one of the heads of the conference asked if Mr. Huff and I would be interested in helping with one of the classes. And I said, sure. Then I called Mr. Huff. So, he's committed. It's okay. Be nervous. What was it, six weeks you knew?
Yeah.
Yeah. Really proud of the city. I'm proud of our, our police department, you guys. I've paid attention. We've had some really nasty calls. The day I left for the C4 conference, my wife left for work. I went the opposite direction to Toad's, and I get to Toad's, and somebody pulls up and says, what the heck is going on in town? Somebody decided to jump in one of our patrol cars. I went back, first I made sure my wife made it to work, and then I went to City Hall, and I would, won't repeat what I told Mr. Huff we should do, but the situation ended well. Thank you to your officers. Thank you to all the other agencies that came in. I, I think almost every department in Clackamas County came. They must have been very bored.
There was a lot.
How is our officer doing?
He's doing good. He's going to be on light duty, recovering for a little bit, but he's in great spirits and he's doing good.
Good. Good. He continues to be in my prayers. I'm sure council's also. It's still fire season, guys. It's really hot. Let's make sure we're doing what we can to prevent 2020 from coming again. Casey, I can, I can say Casey right now. Here in a few weeks, I won't be able to, I'll have to add counselor to it. Congratulations, sir. I know you've been, I've heard you've been studying a lot. I've had people come to me that have recommended you, pushed, or pushed you to apply for this. And so, congratulations. I look forward to working with you and joining our team. It is 9:15, and if there isn't anything else for the good of the order, I will adjourn this meeting.
Yes. Thank you.